The meeting minutes from August 7. Correct, yeah, with the second meeting in August is the one that we canceled, so it's like 21st. Probably in the folder for today's meeting. Okay, I'll have to check with Scott Bennett. I'll chat with Scott Bennett and just make sure to get dropped into next meeting's folder, so everybody gets more to look at them. There's nothing pressing on that agenda, the formal records and appeals that we have. So we are live on YouTube, if you guys are ready to enroll.
Please join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father in heaven, we bow before thee at this time to exercise our privilege to worship in this free country. We are so grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and pray that we'll be able to make good decisions while we're here. I also pray for the leaders of our community, that they'll be guided, they'll have the energy that they need to attend to the the issues and challenges and work that there is to do. I also pray for the leaders of our state government and our country as well, that I will be with them and sustain them as well. We thank thee again for this opportunity to serve, pray that thou will be here with us and we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. A second.
Go ahead, Porter.
Yeah, I'm gonna run through real quick just our project list. Again, this is available in the planning commission folder for everybody to kind of keep up to date on, but there are a few projects that we're working on, this short-term rental is on our agenda today, so we'll talk about that here in a minute. We have a couple, we have one design review for a light manufacturing facility adjacent to the existing cash value machine campus. That is a permitted use in the zone and it is going through what's called the design review process. It's administrative through our development review committee, so that won't come to the planning commission, but that will be a new building in that campus there. We have a boundary line adjustment, this is this is tied to the East Haven subdivision. The 2750 road that cuts east and west along the southern portion of that of that subdivision that ties into 12 East, just right at the canal. There's a portion of land there that the Berger family owns that they are looking to just adjust to accommodate for the right-of-way that is going to be connected into that intersection. So it's a minor boundary line adjustment, those don't come to the planning commission, when we come to the DRC, we need to make sure that they don't cause any zoning issues for subsided lots. We have another design review for building out the manufacturing area, that one's using our queue. It is, it's kind of just hanging out, we haven't heard back from that applicant, so we'll see if that moves forward or not. As far as the last few meetings, we had East Haven, that final plat has been approved by city council, should be reported here shortly. So that will be moving forward with installation of their improvements. They hope to get started and get substantially complete before the snow flies, but we likely won't see homes in East Haven until the spring. Beck Farm is a subdivision that is kind of in concept plan right now, that'll come to the planning commission in the coming months. That's east of the canal, south of, it's called Orchard View. It was a subdivision east of the canal, east of 1600 East, just south of Canyon Ridge. So that's, that's the concept, we're looking at it before it comes to the planning commission. But other than that, there's not a whole lot we need to follow up on that we won't already be discussing in this meeting today. But if you have any questions about any of the past projects where any of them are, feel free to let me know, I have to chat about them, but as always, you can hop into this spreadsheet, it's in your folder, if you want to understand where each of these projects were at, you can click on the link, it'll take you to a checklist that we're working on, just to track them through our review and approval process. So, just as an FYI, if you'd like more details, that's where to find it.
All right, we'll go to item number one. Public hearing, view and action regarding the Sage Hills Phase Two preliminary plat and subdivision improvement plans. Scott, do you want to tell us a little about this?
Okay, so this is, this is the second phase of the Sage Hills subdivision. Phase one is under construction, if you just drive down 60s, you'll see a lot of dirt being moved. That's just south of Smiling H, which is just south of us here, on 2500 North. Phase two takes the 650 East Road and pulls it further south into a cul-de-sac bowl here. It creates additional lots along that frontage. It also will subdivide two additional lots off of the two existing parcels there, those are those two log cabin parcels. And we've got sufficient acreage and frontage to divide off one additional lot, which then will be tying into the water and sewer for this phase. And then all of these parcels, the new lots that have been created in addition to the legacy parcels, will be connected into the secondary water distribution system that was established with phase one. It will be carried into phase two, so everybody will be on the same secondary water system. And that comprise what the city's secondary water requirements for distribution and study into each of the individual lots. One of the unique aspects about this subdivision is lot number 209, zoom in a little bit here. With the unique configuration of the parent parcels, trying to get the developable area access is a little bit of a challenge because of how the configuration pulls out to the west in this portion of the land. And really the only way to gain access to this acreage is through a flag lot, a flag lot stem. If you look in the staff report, there's references the city's code with regards to flag lots. And the planning commission does need to make certain findings in order to approve the use of a flag lot. Let me open up the staff report here, because this is one of the more unique aspects of this project. And it does require specific action from the planning commission. Let's see, okay, so here are the four findings. Number one, allowing a flag lot or lots would be necessary for the efficient use of land, or, so it's on demand, it's a or, to allow a property owner reasonable use and benefit of a parcel of land in accordance with the zoning of the parcel, or to alleviate a situation which would otherwise cause extreme hardship for the owner, and where access to a public street could not reasonably be developed to serve a lot or lots such that each lot would meet the minimum lot width for access requirements for the zone. And so when you look at this particular property, it's easy to indicate that both number one and two, I would argue, are applicable here given the configuration of where that acreage is located. Where the lots in this zone only need to be 12,000 square feet, the only way to get a lot into that area is to access a flag stem. And number four, words in hands, we need to make one of these three findings, and this fourth one, where access to a public street could not reasonably be developed to serve a lot such that each lot would meet the minimum lot width or access requirements for the zone. So if we hop back over and take a look at the configuration again, you'll see there's really not a logical or reasonable place to put a public street back to this rearmost portion of acreage. And there's existing homes developed on the frontage with 60s here, so pushing a road through to connect the route doesn't make sense. So I do believe that this configuration is able to meet those findings, if the planning commission agrees, then you want to incorporate those into your motion to approve this configuration. Do you have some questions as far as the layout of this proposed second phase?
I have a question, just has to do with the flag lot. So, that goes to two applicants.
There you are, 2230 North.
Yeah, so that's public land. Correct, so when this gets to a side block.
Correct, so this portion, this 2330 North is actually being installed with phase one. When phase one was being considered, the road that provided access into these lots exceeded the city's maximum terminal street length of 750 feet. And so they were required to connect this portion of roadway in order to provide that secondary point of EBS. And so from this point, phase two is then allowed to go 750 feet to its terminus. And this, as it's drafted, is at around five and a half, 550 or so feet. So it's well within the terminal length minimum that we allow, or say maximum that we allow. Now, yeah, this will be completed as part of phase one, and then this section meets the city's right-of-way standard, which will have curb better sidewalk and a full width right-of-way. Correct. And there is also, just to maybe stir some recollection, phase one, this lot 111, I believe is what it was labeled as, there is a public access easement for a full sidewalk to connect through this block. And let me show you why this will become beneficial, not in the immediate future, but as things progress to the east of these phases. Zoom in here. Okay, so phase one occupies this parcel here, and the road that provides access comes off of 60s and does kind of this jog to the south. Phase two then occupies these three parcels here. And the mid-block connection would provide an access easement and a sidewalk that would connect from this point forward to this point. And eventually, sometime in the future, when these two property owners want to develop the underutilized acreage in their backyard, they would be required to pull the 740 East South and connect it with the cul-de-sac that is now in this shady lane subdivision. And we would require that connection to be made between these lots. So if somebody in these two phases wanted to get over to a east, they could cut mid-block through and make their way over. And hopefully that just allows for some inter-neighborhood connectivity and some forward thinking, but that will be, you know, part of these two first phases and eventually, as time you know, passes and as folks in this area, we decide to develop new roads connecting with this pedestrian connection. So, yeah, lot 111, it doesn't have, it's not a road, it's just a pedestrian pathway. So, it's like a 10-foot easement with like a five, or I forget, it was five or six feet wide paved pathway. Yeah, but it will be on that lot 111 as these assessments accrue. So again, that's splitting phase one, phase two. This drawing doesn't show that easement on lot 111, but if we pull up the final plat for phase one, you would see that easement right here. So that just provides some inner block connectivity, you can get from 60s over to 80s without having to go around the larger block system. Correct. And yeah, the minimum, you know, width is 80 feet, so when you look at the, all of the configurations, they all meet that minimum requirement. Lot 209 is required to have its buildable area, the flag of the flag lot is required to be at least 12,000 square feet, which it does exceed that amount. So, most of these lots actually exceed the square footage requirement, lots 216 and 213 are right at that minimum requirement. There are yeah, the right of the 12,000 square feet actually there, but they do need that 80-foot width requirement. So this, this particular subdivision is before the planning commission as a preliminary plat and as a subdivision improvement plan. This is where the planning commission does have the land use authority to approve this subdivision. For it's a single-family subdivision, it does not go to city council, it doesn't have any geologic hazards. If it did, it would go to the city council as well. But in this instance, the planning commission has the land use authority to approve if it meets the code. One finding in your motion you want to make is that it meets those findings for the allowance of the flag lot. Any, any questions?
Yeah, so looking at Exhibit A, looks like it was a previous version. I think it doesn't include those lots to the south, is that right?
Yeah, let me pull this up, I provided Exhibit A for context.
Yeah, and those ones, because I'm looking and comparing, those ones looks like they managed a layout that did not have a flag lot, but I think the point is, when, when you add those lots to the south, in order to get access to the ones in the south and access to that acreage, you have to have the flag lot.
Correct, yeah, to be able to utilize that acreage, it's hard to provide frontage on the amount of distance within the block structure. These are, you know, the two examples in Exhibit A, these were old concept plans. Phase one is substantially the same, this knuckle design was altered in phase one. Phase two, when this was being discussed, we actually sat down with all the property owners in this quadrant. And we said, hey, you know, you have a lot of underutilized acreage, what can we do to work together to try to get the best potential outcome? And we did have several owners work to incorporate their rear portions here. And that's why the road kind of meanders and provides a cul-de-sac further south than the original concept. Anticipated because some of this partnership wasn't necessarily thought about in the first concept that the subdivision was had. So it's good to see that there's some, some collaboration with those property owners. We had a couple of discussions here at the city offices, it was nice that they could see, you know, how can we work together to benefit everybody's outcome? Good question, so those, these two, we call them residential parcels because they were never subdivided with the plat. And they were created, you know, having meets and bounds descriptions, they were built, you know, prior to some of our subdivision requirements. And so there, they are residential parcels, presumably grandfathered, if you want to use that term. When we subdivide a lot out of a parent parcel, state code requires that we include them in the boundary as a, not a remainder parcel, but as a separate residential building lot. And if we go back and look at the plat here, you'll see that they are included in the darker exterior boundary of the subdivision. So that's why they're labeled as lot 214 and 215, even though they are pre-existing parcels with homes on them. We are simply pulling out some of their acreage to the rear of those homes to create new lots. So when we, when we invoke these and create new development lots out of those grandfathered parcels, they, they need to be included in the boundary of the subdivision. Correct. Correct, yep, just undeveloped land, so if you look at this aerial imagery, this is where those, that new lot is being created. Where this parent parcel has more than 12,000, more than 24,000 square feet, they have ample square footage and frontage on a publicly publicly dedicated street to be able to create that new building lot. And the only thing they need to add is utilities, which they, they were coordinated with to tie into the new utility lines that are running through 2330 North as part of both the phase one and the phase two improvements. And so the water and sewer lines running through phase one and phase two, they all converge and come through 2330 North where laterals can be made to these two new lots that are being pulled out of these parent parcels. So essentially, you know, they, they're being included in the subdivision boundary, it's not necessarily that they're building another home on those existing parcels, they will be building, you know, a new home on the new building lots that are being created. But it does allow for these two to join the Secondary Water Ownership Association, tie into that pressurized irrigation. And, and that way they've got, you know, I would argue, more reliable secondary water to these existing parcels.
Great, any other questions, comments? All right, we need to hold a public hearing. So I will read the rules and go from there. Before you begin, please state your name for the record. Speak into the microphone so your comments can be recorded. Please limit your statements to three minutes, you are not allowed to combine or bank minutes to speak on behalf of others. Please phrase your opinions in the form of statements, not questions. A public hearing is your opportunity to express your opinions to the planning commission, not a time to ask questions of or to expect dialogue between yourself and the planning commissioner, city staff. Please address your comments to the planning commission, not to the public. The commission might ask questions about your comments in order for them to better understand you. In the future, note that if you have questions or need to discuss an issue, you may meet with the planning commission members or the appropriate city staff member before the public hearing where dialogue can take place. You may provide a written statement as your input for a hearing, you may read your entire statement or summarize it, the three-minute limit still applies. You may provide a copy of a written statement to the city recorder. He will make copies for the planning commission and the written statement will become a part of the public record. However, the written submitted statement will not be included in the minutes of the meeting. So we will open our public hearing for anyone that would like to make comments. And if nobody wants to make a comment, we will close our public hearing, thank you. And we'll move on to the commission. Any more discussions? Hopefully you've read the staff reports. And any, any further questions or discussions we have before we make a motion?
I was just gonna say, I'm glad that the landowner's around.
That's good. Yeah.
I was gonna say, as a general rule, I don't mind flag lots too much, I think there could be some really cool and intriguing things with those. If it's our policy to try and avoid them, I think it looks like we, we went to every effort to try and avoid them in this case, and I think it makes sense here, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, are we ready to make a motion? I think, I think we all feel like we're ready to approve this. I need, I need somebody to make a motion. Including the staff.
Yeah, just to maybe give you guys a little hand along, so the staff report does include a couple of conditions specific to the flag stem for 209, there's minimum access requirements, so it needs further access. So if, if you're inclined to approve this, I would recommend your, your motion include the facts and findings and conditions to the staff report, which will, which will take care of all of those, those points of concentration.
Teresa, Gavin, you ready? All right, it's been moved and segmented. All in, do I need to repeat that? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two, Scott, do you want to tell us about that?
Let me pull up a few items here. Okay, so this next item on the agenda, it is scheduled for a public hearing. We, as a planning commission, have been working on several adjustments to our code over the past almost six months now. And I want to open up the city's website. Just for anybody who's in the audience or listening online, so everybody understands where these things were being kept and available for public review. So the city's website, ofogansity.org, if you come to this far right-hand side of General Plan, F A two. These have been communicated also in, in the city's newsletters as well. This is the website that was stood up specifically for the General Plan project. The General Plan, you know, we first picked that off in Q4 of 2023. We worked through all of 2024 in part of the first quarter of '25 to develop, work with the public, hold multiple open houses, public hearings, survey efforts, all of which accumulated into an updated general plan, which was adopted by our city council in February of this year. Pursuant to this plan, we also worked on a city center master plan, which is more of a small area plan of a specific geographic area in the city between 280s, 430s, 200 more. So those two planning documents were reviewed and approved in February. And since that time in February, we have shifted to what we call implementation mode. Where we take that general plan, which is a policy guide, a guiding document to help the city to further take steps towards a long-term vision. The General Plan is a 20-year planning horizon document, so it tries to anticipate our growth over the next 20 years and provide some goals vision and different strategies for us to bring about the vision all the time. So with those, with those goals and strategies in the plan, we started working on text amendments and updates to various sections of our code to implement the policies of the plan, and we've been working our way methodically through the land use code since March. So on this webpage, nlcplan.org, this is where you can find the adopted general plan, the adopted city center master plan. And then the draft amendments that are proposed for 12A, 12B, 12C, and the form-based code for the city center, and then 12D, which is what we'll be chatting about later on today in work session. The, the code, so 12A is a section of the city's code specific to land use. And within 12, there's zoning, subdivisions, and geologic hazards, different types of regulations. We, early on, we worked through 12A and 12B in March and April, and then we've been focusing heavily on 12C. 12C is specifically the zoning section of our land use code. And within 12C, we anticipated the need to create several new zoning classifications that are that are anticipated through the general plan. Specifically, Wolf Pack Way has a new zoning that are anticipated through the general plan. Specifically, uh, Wolf Pack Way has a new zoning classification that's anticipated, twenty-five hundred north, Main Street. Um, the neighborhood commercial nodes that, uh, may or may not come to fruition, you know, with small neighborhood scale commercial. And so we drafted those. We've been reviewing those with city council. And we've got it to a point where we think it's, it's ready for formal review, um, public input in the form of a public hearing. Um, but as, as of today, uh, we would like to hold that hearing, but we're not gonna take action because we still have more work to do in twelve D, um, which we'll continue to work through. Um, in the, the planning commissioners folder, there are two files. Um, the first for twelve C, the second for the form-based code. We'll come back to the form-based code here in a minute. In twelve C, you've got part one, two, and three. Uh, it gets a bit lengthy, and so trying to keep it under one Google Doc becomes very burdensome, and the document gets really clunky and hard to scroll through. Uh, but if you wanna see the, the very nitty-gritty, all the red lines, you can go into these three, uh, subsections of twelve uh, C, which the public can also, um, access on the website with, with these three links here. So first, second, and third portions of twelve C. Um, also in the planning commissioners folder for this topic, there is a policy discussion guide. And what this document is trying to do is help, uh, the planning commission, the public, anybody who would like to get the bullet point summary of all the adjustments that we have been making. Um, so if anybody wants to try to study through this and make sense of it, this document here with the, uh, the policy discussion catalog, that's gonna be the best place to start reviewing. If there's something in this catalog that piques your interest, then I'd recommend you hop into whichever part it's contained within. So you'll see this first section is for part one, and then there's a part for part two, and another for part three. So you're welcome to hop in there. What I did wanna bring to the planning commission's attention tonight, however, you know, since we've discussed this several times, is we have received a few public comments in the document itself, which is great. Uh, folks have been going online, reading through it, and they've had a couple of comments. So we've, we've added all of those comments as of yesterday, so it's as up-to-date as we, we can make it for this meeting. Um, for, for the planning commission to review. Uh, whoops, zoom in, so it's actually, allegedly now that we're to this, to the document. Um, the majority, and I'm not sure if all the planning commissioners have had a moment to, to look through each of these comments, but the majority of them, um, have concerns about twenty-five hundred north and the new twenty-five hundred north gateway, uh, district that is called out in in the general plan, and then the draft language for zoning classification for that area. So I wanted to just, uh, make sure everybody understands that we are aware of these comments. We have reviewed them. I'm sure the planning commission has taken note as well. Now, but we've received comments from Steve Moore, Craig Newsy, Jason Allen, um, Mike, Brett and Shelley Dally, uh, Gary G. Hansi, and Chris Hansi. And, uh, those comments are, uh, are part of the record. So where we're having a public hearing tonight, uh, we wanna make sure that those are made part of the record for anybody to review. They are still in the Google document. If anybody wants to scroll through the Google document and find those comments, you can find them in line with the text amendments as well, or you can hop into this policy guide and read them individually. Um, but what I wanted to, uh, just, uh, quickly explain the concerns that the majority of these comments are trying to describe. So twenty-five hundred north, I'm gonna pull this up on the map, and then I'm also gonna pull it up on the general plan itself, just so everybody knows where the impetus is coming from. So the general plan, zoom out so it can scroll quicker, then we'll zoom back in. The general plan has a section for future land use, and it is perhaps the most policy-heavy portion of the general plan, where we're talking about what the future land uses are anticipated over the next twenty years, which influences our current and future zoning map. Okay, so I'm gonna scroll down. We're gonna take a look at the overall future land use map, and then we'll look into the twenty-five hundred north gateway district a little bit more specifically. Okay, so this is arguably the meat and potatoes of the whole plan. This is where the rubber really hits the road, um, for this document. This future land use district map is not a zoning map. It does not govern land use. It informs future land use and future zoning decisions as individual, uh, properties are considered, um, by planning commission and city council. This map is essentially, it was created with endless public participation, endless surveys, uh, in-person meetings, workshops. And we started to cobble this together with, with a lot of feedback, and we had a lot of public, uh, comment with regards to twenty-five hundred north and a desire to make it more aesthetically pleasing, to make it more of an economic, um, opportunity for the future. And the twenty-five hundred north, uh, gateway corridor is anticipated to be the first several hundred feet of the frontage parcels, both north and south of the corridor. Now, these maps are not drawn to any level of survey level accuracy. They're, they're intended to be broad and approximations of where these district boundaries will be. Um, but if we look at this, twenty-five hundred north, it, it, uh, essentially covers the portion of the city from our westernmost boundary near the airport and the railroad tracks, uh, through Main Street and up to, uh, a little bit past Wolf Pack Way. And the, the impetus of this is we have a, a reasonable expectation and not, not a too distant future, that there's gonna be several large changes. And I wanna go back to the map and zoom out just a little bit to help communicate what those larger regional, uh, variables are and how it, it informs what the future could look like and why we're trying to plan for that future outcome. Uh, I remember back in the day when Tenth West was installed, it was supposed to be the bypass. It was supposed to be the way everybody got, you know, north and south in the valley without having to get, um, uh, plugged up on Main Street. And at the time, it was, you know, this huge project, and it was supposed to be, you know, what, what would get us quicker north and south. Uh, that was twenty-ish years ago, and a lot has changed. Our population has certainly increased. There's been a lot of land use decisions, you know, to the south of us that have brought more traffic to this road. Um, the large commercial, um, and retail establishments that have kinda changed the, the dynamic of the street. Uh, Tenth West was never a true bypass, cause it always dead-ended at the, the airport with not really a way around. There has been a lot of, of dialogue and discussion with UDOT, um, in conjunction with the, the Main Street studies that have been done. And there's more Main Street studies that are upcoming, but we all recognize that there is a true need for a regional highway. And sixteen hundred west so far has been identified as that, um, that alignment for this road. Now, this won't be like, uh, like Tenth West. We anticipate it looking similar to the legacy highway, you know, down on the Lost Edge Front, where it's a divided two-lane highway with interchanges on ramp, off ramp. And each community would essentially have one interchange, um, for their access into and out of the community because it's meant to be the corridor for high-capacity north-south access. So with regards to North Logan, sixteen hundred west is going to likely have its interchange somewhere between the airport and Benson in this vicinity, uh, with an interchange on ramp, off ramp. Now, that, that provides a huge change in traffic circulation patterns, how people get out of town, into town, through town, around town. Um, it opens up, you know, commercial opportunities that, obviously that, that node out in where the interchange will be. Um, so that, that's one large variable that we know is in the, in the not-too-distant future. Okay? The other few variables is second west is a regionally significant corridor that will connect. Right now, uh, second west dead ends in, uh, this area on twenty-two hundred north, and then becomes a half-width next to a canal, and it's not really a through street. Uh, but as development pressure continues, second west will connect through, and there will be a four-way lighted intersection on twenty-five hundred north. And that will be, you know, a, a critical element to, you know, bypass Main Street. It'll open up more commercial opportunity. You'll now have a four-way intersection with a signal, which, you know, invokes other commercial opportunities. Um, so that, that's one very, uh, significant regional connection. Uh, similarly, so, uh, Fourth West will be connected through, uh, Logan City into North Logan. And that connection has already been identified through agreements to connect through, uh, this alignment up to where Fourth West is currently stubbed in our industrial area. So when these connections are made, we will have two lighted intersections on twenty-five hundred north, which totally changes the dynamic of, of the corridor by itself. Uh, when you add these connections plus Fourth West, and then the last variable, which is the airport itself, uh, there's a lot of, of on-airport campus opportu- uh, the airport master plan has a lot of future potential, and the, uh, the airport likely will continue to grow. So there's a lot going on here. The community, as we went through the general plan, said, hey, twenty-five hundred could use a facelift. You know, it could, it could perform better. What, what can we do about that? And in the general plan, uh, we identified this, this district as a future opportunity for uh, maybe some, some zoning adjustments, just some iterative changes over time to help that become, become a reality. And, uh, if you look further into this future land use section of the plan, there's a, there's a section specific to each of these districts on the map. The first in line is this twenty-five hundred north gateway. Um, so this, this initial statement kind of sets forth the vision for what this may look like in the future, what we would like to strive to, towards. And it indicates that the twenty-five hundred north gateway district aims to create a welcoming and visually appealing entrance to North Logan while supporting economic growth through a mix of hospitality, office, and commercial uses. It seeks to establish a positive community identity through high-quality development standards and attractive streetscape announcements with distinct characteristics for its western and eastern sections. So the western, eastern, separated by Main Street, is what those two sections had, had envisioned. It then provides, you know, some, some example images. You know, these are, these images here are obviously more Class A, some hotel, office, retail, you know, food and beverage. Some entrance signage was something we really wanted to focus on, as this will be our key entry into North Logan. Main Street passes through Logan, but when, when twen- when Sixteenth, uh, West comes in, that will be our, our primary entrance into the city. So if we wanted to take an opportunity to say, yeah, there's, there's likely gonna need to be some signage for this, uh, sense of place, um, some differentiation between the communities. So that, that's the future goal. Well, keep in mind, we don't, nobody expects this to be something that happens overnight, and it will be iterative. It will change over time. It'll be one, one policy decision and one zoning decision, uh, at a time. Now, that, that vision, you know, has a, a vast contrast to what is there now. And I think that that's where the majority of these public comments are coming from, where if you were to say that, hey, we're only gonna allow hospitality, food and beverage, and office on twenty-five hundred north, we'd be really hard-pressed to attract that type of development amongst what we see out there now, uh, which is heavier industry, outdoor storage, um, equipment storage, those types of things. It's just not, uh, congruent, you know, and so for us to be able to go from what we have now to where we wanna be in the future, there's some changes that will be needed over time. And so a lot of the property owners, business owners, see that as, as concerning, which I can that, uh, that thought process. And what we wanna make clear is that the general plan is a future vision, and it's a long-term vision. Um, and as things change, for example, these roadway connections, the market may naturally direct in that direction where the value is created and, uh, higher intensive uses can become more viable, and, you know, maybe property owners decide it's time to make a change on all property, uh, in that direction. Uh, I wanna make it clear, the city has no intention of pulling the rug out of any business and changing the zoning without, uh, an opportunity for them to continue their business as it exists today. So that needs to be clear. That is never an intention of the city. We do not want anybody to think that that's our intention. We do have businesses there, uh, that, uh, we will work with as partners over time. Maybe we'll create some incentive programs, or maybe provide some funding for some landscaping improvements and some, maybe some facade grants to help give some of those existing buildings a facelift, uh, which I think is just in everybody's interest to, to bring the, the aesthetic quality of the corridor, um, to a higher standard, which obviously will attract business and attract higher intensive uses. And hopefully, through iterative changes slowly over time, we see this as essentially the tide raising all ships for everybody benefit. The city looks at this as a partnership opportunity with these landowners and, and business owners. There will be some, some efforts on both sides of the fence. Everybody's gonna have to pull in that direction. There will be some, some things that everybody needs to work together on, but it's not our intention to, um, to unilaterally change businesses, prevent businesses, or kick businesses out of town. So I hope that's clear. Um, I, I think that that speaks to the majority of those comments that we've received on that section of, of the draft code.
Just to clarify that, so if there's an existing use on twenty-five hundred north, um, and, and a new owner comes in, or they, they subdivide the, the parcel to sell off, that, that the zoning was not changing at any point?
Correct.
That it could, it could be proposed to change by the new owner. But we're not going in and forcing them to make a zone change, even with an owner change.
Correct. So, so to be clear, zoning is something that a, an owner can request. It's something that the city can change if we believe it's the best policy to be changed. That's up to planning commission to make a recommendation and city council to, to enact as the legislative body. Uh, but the existing businesses that are there now would enjoy a grandfather right, uh, and they would be able to continue to operate in perpetuity as they exist today. Now, there will be some stipulations that, you know, they can't, you know, double in size, they can't expand unless they do so in a manner that is directed in, uh, the policy direction of the future zoning and the, the vision for this corridor. And that's where maybe there's, there'll be a little bit of growing pain, and maybe some, some discussions of how do we help this business grow in place and still meet the aesthetic standards of the future development.
Landscaping or parking requirements. Yeah.
Yep. And new development as they come along, you know, they'll be held to a, a, a higher standard, um, and slowly over time, we're, we're hoping that we can get this corridor to a place that matches the vision of the public asked us to achieve.
Potentially Sixteenth West, uh, bypass of the tenth bypass. Is that five, ten, fifteen, twenty years after we had a pass?
Yeah, you know, it's, it is a UDOT effort. Um, UDOT is always behind the eight ball, it seems, with demand and infrastructure. Uh, person, be too rough on them, but they're, they're kinda known as chewing up houses and spitting out asphalt after the demand has surpassed the need. Uh, I do think that they have done some, some good preemptive work, and we have had some studies that are, are pointing in that Sixteenth West direction. There's been some alignment studies to see, you know, how does this line up? And how does it connect to the highway on the south end of the valley, and how does it bypass, uh, through and around the airport and around some of those larger, uh, land uses to the south of us, like the sewage ponds in Logan and those things? So, uh, it really is just driven by population growth and traffic demand. There's been a lot of pressure on Main Street, a lot of focus, political focus on Main Street. And I think where we know our population, if we continue to grow as we have, um, you know, twenty-five-ish years will be double our population. I would guess it is sometime between now and twenty, maybe sooner. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's development-demand-driven, and, uh, the, the question initially was how far west do we push this? And how, you know, we don't wanna go so far that it's really not convenient to access, cause it's too far west. We didn't also wanna shrink it too far east, because then it would be overrun quickly, just, you know, similar as Tenth West was. So there's been a lot of discussion. Uh, the timeline obviously is not finite, but it is subject to demand, and we are growing, so it's inevitable.
So if you were betting, you'd say fifteen years?
We should put a bet board together and see.
He's not a betting man.
Yeah. There, I think there's gonna be more discussion on this. Uh, UDOT is going to be kicking off a north Main Street study. They just finished a south Main Street study. They're gonna do a north, and, and that'll be part of, obviously, the discussion. It's always part of any regional transportation discussion that is had, so it's out there. It's a thing. Uh, it's just a matter of time. But when that does occur, this corridor, the vision is, hey, this is now gonna be our primary entry into the city. Let's try to bring it up to, you know, what that potential could be. And I think that there, naturally, the market will push in that direction as these connections are made. That land will become more valuable, more traffic. That land will become more valuable, more traffic will pass these properties. And I think the market will push in that direction with maybe some nudging from the city and some aesthetic requirements and some upgrades.
In these plans, how far north and any idea on the alignment as it goes?
I haven't looked at them for a minute, but they do, you know, they do connect all the way south to the highway heading out of town. I could look into it, maybe shoot over some, I think there's some draft exhibits out there that we could provide. I don't want to speak too soon, but I think that the regional transportation plan through the CMPO, the Cache Metropolitan Planning Organization, has an alignment. I'll have to double check and see, though. So those are the public comments we received on the sections of twelve C that are in draft form that have been written comments submitted. Now, we do have this on the agenda tonight for a public hearing, so we want to make sure that we open it up for a public hearing. If anybody has any questions about what is in those sections of code, it's far too lengthy for us to really go through it top to bottom in a meeting such as this. But if you'd like to have a detailed discussion on anything, you know, or if any of the public has a question, we can open up that section and chat about it. Okay. One more thing, that's twelve C. Inside of twelve C, that's why in the folder, there's a twelve C folder, then there's the Form-Based Code folder. Let me go back on the city's general plan website. The second link here is the adopted city center master plan. So if anybody wants to take a look at this adopted plan, you can. As mentioned, city centers between Second East, Fourth East, eighteen hundred north, and twenty-two hundred north, and some perimeter parcels, the boundary of this area that was more specifically planned. This particular plan calls for, you know, a downtown. The city during the general plan, even in the twenty thirteen general plan, wanted to have its own little downtown. That was the vision that was in the general plan from twenty thirteen on. And then we reestablished that vision, asked the public if they still think that's viable, if it's still something they would like to pursue in this updated twenty-twenty-five plan. And there's an overwhelming desire to try to achieve our own little downtown. Our Main Street is often considered the forgotten Main Street. And it's just a highway that cuts through us, but it doesn't really provide a downtown. So this city center master plan, it expounds on the original city center master plan and gets a little bit more specific. And essentially, this is a document that studied the economics, studied the land use, and spat out a hypothetical, I call this a circulation and massing plan, where we know our buildings, how tall roughly, you know, how many parking spaces in the area do we need? There's a desire to have a city plaza. And this plan by itself is just an aspiration, just like the general plan. But in order for this to come to fruition, we had to put it into the code. Now, this plan is much more focused on what it looks like than the uses that would be within the buildings. Now, obviously, there's still use restrictions in the buildings, but this type of zoning differs from our current zoning, where our current zoning is what we call Euclidean zoning, which is separation of uses. To regulate this area of town, we've used a newer planning tool. It's not brand new, but it's newer in the planning realm, and it's called a Form-Based Code, where the regulation is entirely focused on what the buildings look like, what are the setbacks? How tall? What's the architecture? And so we've been working with our consulting team, and we've put together a draft Form-Based Code. And we reviewed this with planning commission and work session, but this code is a standalone document that is referenced in twelve C as being adopted into the code. So it's a standalone document because it's very graphic, it's got a lot of tables. It's not easy to codify into a traditional code setting. But it is a governing document adopted by reference in twelve C. And so for that reason, we wanted to make sure that as we have this public hearing on all of the items in twelve C, we make the most recent draft of the Form-Based Code available for public comment at the same time. We've gone through this in length. There have not been any substantial changes, a couple of tweaks, just for formatting, legibility, clarity. But we want to make sure that this is available on the city's website in the planning commission folder in great detail for anybody that would like to review it. With that said, I don't have anything else to add unless you guys have questions for me, or if the public has questions they'd like to review.
Any other questions? No questions. So we need to open up this public hearing. I write, I will read the rules. Please state your name, speak in the microphone, limit your statement to three minutes. You are not allowed to combine the bank minutes to speak on behalf of others. Please phrase your opinions in the form of statements, not questions. Please address your comments to the planning commission, not to the public. The commission might ask questions about your comments in order for them to better understand you. In the future, note that if you have questions or need to discuss an issue, you may meet with the planning commission members or the appropriate staff member before the public hearing, where dialogue can take place. You may provide a written statement as your input for a hearing. You may read your entire statement or summarize that the three-minute limit still applies. You may provide a copy of a written statement, this is the recorder. He will make copies for the planning commission, and the written statement will become a part of the public record. However, the written statement submitted, the written submitted statement will not be included in the minutes of the meeting. So we will open our public hearing now, for anyone who'd like to make a comment.
My name is Russell Goodwin. And I have here the original city center concept plan, strategy B five LLC. Very ambitious, very eloquent language, very ambitious language. We're going to have just amazing, wonderful hotels and convention centers. And the amount of money that visitors will bring to the city is just incredible. It's just all wonderful. And then we, as a city, retained an outfit called Civil Solutions in the person of Jake Young to do what Scott and you are attempting to do. I'll convert this into code to implement it. And Jake Young and Civil Solutions, as near as I could determine, were employed by the city on the order of a decade. I don't see where any Form-Based Code came out of that whole effort. So what I'm asking you, before you proceed, is let's get a cost accounting of all that we've put into the various city center proposals, none of which thus far have amounted to anything, and in my opinion are fanciful and farcical. I wonder, we're going to create this wonderful place, the city center, that we're apparently all going to want to go visit and hang out and rub shoulders with our neighbors. And it'll be a great community spirit, and then we'll return, drive back home and forget about all that. It'll disappear. I wonder if it's so wonderful, this Form-Based Code in the city center, why do I have to suffer under Euclidean zoning? If it's so wonderful, this Form-Based Code, let's put it on the whole city. Let's make walkable streets and meandering lanes and all the things that you talk about in this city center concept. I've expressed before, I believe that we have a city center. You know, some could strongly argue, this is it, right here. This is the city center. The original concept had as, if you might, consider anchor tenants, the city office, the police, the library is part of the city center. They're not there, they're here. But in my opinion, as an holder, resident of North Logan, our city center is on twelve hundred east and twenty-one hundred north, that I call twenty-one twelve. And that was our, if you look at the geography, that was our, that's our high point. And that was our original historical city center. Let's put our historical city center as it once was, and let's make that our city center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good.
I listened.
Tell us your name.
Mark answered, sorry. Thoughts on Russ's name, because he raises the point that we've seen multiple efforts on this over multiple decades. And I think that there is one value to those prior efforts, and that is it has preserved the site for something that can happen. The vision will change, we haven't seen it manifest, I agree with that. Wish it would have in the past. But if we would have done nothing, we would have a lot of apartment complexes in that whole area, and we would never be able to see something potentially grand. We can all decide and debate on what is grand and what is not grand. But I would submit that tenements is not grand, and that's what would have happened. So it has protected it for that. I would also say that the Form-Based Code is a unique creature. It lends itself better to a mixed-use environment. That's what this is, and so I think that's why Form-Based Code has relevance here as opposed to residential or other more limited single-use zones. We may see it expand other areas, but I think that's a reason to distinguish between White Form-Based here and not implementing a city White Form-Based. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will close our public hearing. And we really don't have to take any action on this tonight. This public hearing was just transparency for the public to know what's going on. Commissioners, do you want to say anything before we move on?
Porter? Echo what Mark said, I think, listening to Russ's comments. I think, Mark, you're addressing those, and Russ, acknowledge your thoughts. We've talked about that before, your twenty-one twelve city center concept. So I do think that the Form-Based Code makes sense in that area. I know that the American dream is still to have a house with a yard, and so we get that with Euclidean zoning in the rest of the city. But the world is changing, and we need places for young kids and older folks to have, you know, mixed use and all the amenities next to them. I think that mixed use and that Form-Based Code will create a really vibrant city center area there. And I think, again, the space is preserved, looked at it, and I think this is an opportunity, and hopefully.
Thank you, Porter. Anyone else? All right, well, we appreciate the comments, we appreciate the work. We know it's a work in progress, and it's been going for a while. I'm grateful that the city is trying to preserve some good ideas. So we'll move on to item number three. Scott, you want to tell us about item number three?
Yeah, let me real quick, just get a few things pulled up, clean up the screen here. Okay, this item number three is an administrative item. Now, the planning commission is doing a request for a conditional use permit. The planning commission is a land use authority over the issuance of conditional use permits, so there will be review and action taken. There is no public hearing associated with a conditional use permit, as it is technically an administrative review. This particular item, request, I should say, is for a detached accessory dwelling unit to be used as a short-term rental at property located at fifteen fifty-one east, seventeen hundred north. In this staff report, you'll notice they follow similar staff reports for short-term rentals, similar conditions of approval, which establish our occupancy, parking, those types of expectations. A home-based business license will be required with an inspection. The one unique aspect of this particular request, let me actually go to the map, get a better aerial of this subject property here. Okay, so it's this property here on Seventeenth North and about Sixteenth East. Here's the detached structure. This building used to be smaller, used to be a twenty-five by twenty-five detached garage. It was originally permitted back in twenty twenty-three, and there's a few of you on the commission who remember when we reviewed conditional use permits for detached accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals, and some of the dialogue, I think Gavin, you were here with us as well, that man, obviously. And there was some discussion back and forth, and we had, you know, an application that helped us bring our current ordinance that establishes square footages and some of those things for detached accessory dwelling units specific to living space above a garage. Previously, our ordinance allowed for a detached accessory dwelling unit to be no larger than one thousand square feet. And if it was entirely above a detached garage, the gross square footage allowed up to fifteen hundred square feet. We reviewed that language, there was some ambiguity in that language, and the updated ordinance allows for up to twenty-five hundred square feet for a detached ADU with living space above, entirely above a garage. So that's our current requirement. This structure is quite a bit bigger than that. If you read through the staff report, it's about thirty-nine hundred and change. And what we were reviewing, when this was permitted back in twenty twenty-three, I went through our building permit process, this is right around the time that our ordinance was changing, and we were going through these discussions. And there was some, there was, as the building permit was originally requested, it was requested as a smaller square footage. As they started constructing this building, there was a, there was an issue identified with the existing footing and foundation. They had hoped to utilize the existing footing of the old twenty-five by twenty-five garage. And as they started excavating, they realized that that footing was not sufficient, and so they submitted to the building department for a slightly larger footprint. And so at the end of the day, there was a misunderstanding. It was permitted as a detached accessory dwelling unit, but it is larger than the other ordinance allows. We went through all the legal processes, submitted all the documentation that was required. It just simply is a little bit of a little bit of a current need for support. So with that understanding, as it's detailed in the staff report, we would consider this structure to be legally conforming, I'm sorry, legally non-conforming detached accessory dwelling unit, properly permitted to the city. The use that is proposed, short-term rental, is a permitted use as long as a conditional use permit is granted. It's a condition for another, but it is a property right if they have gone through the conditioning use process. The city's non-conforming language or code that governs non-conforming structures and uses does allow for a non-conforming structure to be used by a conforming use, which would be a short-term rental as a conforming use. So you'll see in the staff report, there are standard conditions of approval. And we do recognize this as a legally non-conforming detached accessory dwelling unit that is proposed to be occupied by a conforming use if the conditional use permit is granted, subject to the conditions in the report. So that's the staff's recommendation, there's a positive recommendation as long as those conditions are imposed. But happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Do you believe we have a representative from that department there as well, if you want to ask them some questions?
Can you bring up the staff?
Is there a portion of looking for?
Just the answers to the staff.
Conditions here?
Comments from commissioners, questions? I looked it over.
Porter, you look like you have something to say.
Oh, we have something to say. The, I think in terms of the overall application, I think it's one of the current short-term rentals. The parking is clearly off-street, there's plenty of space sufficient for the proposed use, so I think.
Gavin?
Not about this. If a, if you ever want to.
Gross building, yeah, so the way that that language came to be, as we said, what is a reasonable square footage for just a standalone little cabin in the backyard? It's like 1250, that's a reasonable two-bedroom, two-bathroom efficiency, you know, unit. So the idea behind that was 1250 is the footprint. If you have garage space and wanted to put living space above, your gross then is allowed to be 2,500. If that space is above a garage that is used by the primary dwelling, obviously you could, you know, share garage spaces, but yeah, 25 is today's requirement. If a new detached accessory dwelling unit is proposed, it would go through our building permit process, but we verify the square footage.
All right. I read it. Makes sense to me. I think it's an excellent application. You ready to make a motion?
I might try.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental subject to the staff recommendations built for us.
Backs, findings, and conditions.
All right. Any second?
A second.
It's been proposed and seconded that we approve a conditional use permit for this property, all in favor. Oh, subject to the conditions of the staff recommendations. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys are welcome to hang out. You're welcome to head out too.
You don't want to stay? Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's move on to item number four. Scott, work session.
This item is specific to 12B. Kind of worked our way through the code, and this is one of the last sections of code that we're gonna fully anticipate touching for this general plan implementation process. So the light is at the end of the tunnel. We've saved the best for last, or I should say, we've saved the most technical for the last. As you'll recall, as we went through the general plan, one of the ideas was floated to try to find a way to incentivize high-quality development where we have, you know, neighborhoods that last through time, you know, that maintain their character, that have, you know, a high degree of pride and ownership, and we just have good quality development. How do we incentivize that, you know, out of the development community? You know, how do we afford to do that out of, you know, the current market conditions? And one of the ideas was, you know, the general public, they struggle to review zone upsongs where, you know, we have existing neighborhoods, we have existing character. And I think a lot of folks rightfully are concerned about whenever there's an upzone that is proposed. And so in the general plan, we said, let's maybe brainstorm a mechanism where we can incentivize the development community and the city can get a win-win outcome in future development. We've kind of always named this the à la carte density bonus option. You guys may have a better idea for what we finally end up calling it. We may just call it density bonus subdivision. Our current ordinance for subdivisions allows for a density bonus to be granted in exchange for open space. It's as simple as that. It's just, you give us open space, we give you two more lots, we'll lower the lot area and with requirements, you can fit them into the parent parcel. So essentially you have smaller lots in the zone than the standard requirement, but we get some open space in exchange. The current language requires that open space to be dedicated to the city, which has become quite problematic in several past developments where we've got city-dedicated open space in areas that are hard to access, hard to maintain, not programmed, that are not part of our parks master plan. Essentially, they function as drainage channels that end up filling up the weeds and they're given tests in perpetuity. You know, we've got to figure out what to do with them. And that was just how the mechanism worked. You know, everybody wanted open space, wanted some elbow room and wanted to keep that green pasture feel between developments, so some clustering of lots and some green spaces between neighborhoods. What was maybe not well-understood or contemplated was how these would be managed in perpetuity and to what public benefit they would actually serve. You know, we do have some trail easements through a lot of them, and that's great, you know. And then we get to a point where we want to improve those trails and make them in perpetuity when they actually connect somewhere. And maybe they'll become more beneficial. But what we'd like to explore is maybe a modification to this bonus where open space is still, you know, beneficial, but maybe there's more that we can exchange for public benefit other than just open space. We've kind of thought about this and there's been, you know, a lot of brainstorming. And you'll see there's two documents on your desk we'd like to run through. And also, if you want to grab a copy, it's on the back counter there, if you want a physical copy of that. Because it's going to be hard for us to review on the screen, so that's why I printed it out, because it's in large format. But what we wanted to do is initially start with, I call it the wish list, the wish à la carte list of all the potential things we may want to negotiate and achieve within, you know, development. And I hope everyone's had a chance to kind of skim through this. I'll do so kind of quickly here. But this document itself is split into two sections. One that is a required-to-participate section and then one that is an à la carte optional section. And that's just an initial thought. You guys may have different thoughts on how we look at this. But initially, I had thought if we want to allow for density bonus, the things that we're trying to achieve is we're trying to achieve these neighborhoods that have longstanding character. And what we've identified is cookie cutter subdivisions struggle because it's cookie cutter. A lot of our historic neighborhoods are bespoke, you know, lots. Every home was built by a separate developer based on preferences of the home builder at the time. And they have a lot of character and they do better. Now, that's only one variable in this whole complex, you know, topic of how do we keep a neighborhood performing well over time and being aesthetically pleasing and being safe and a nice place to live. So that's one of these things we're going to say, if you're going to choose this subdivision method, there are going to be minimum architectural requirements that they opt into. Now, the intent here is that we reduce the cookie cutter, the copy-paste suburbia model that has been predominant in our culture since after World War II. And our hope is that it doesn't necessarily add too much cost. It just requires for some variety and not putting the same floor plan next to the next home. And the other is going to be some, you know, some design that is needed from some of these developers. But my hope is that we have minimal material requirements. And we try to reduce the amount of stout houses. You guys are familiar with that term. Or it's just a garage that you see from the street. There's really no architectural element that indicates that people live within a structure. It's just a house for a car. And then we get some eclectic design within the subdivision. So that's one. Open space is listed as one of these required participate whoever. One thing that is to be discussed is from a higher perspective. North Logan is not that large in the city geographically. We have a lot of very well-programmed park space. Eco-pleasure per capita, we have more per capita than most cities in the state. And are not within a reasonable walking distances. Combine that with some of the private parks, HOA parks, some of these trail systems, trail trails that we anticipated. There's a lot of outdoor recreation and some good open spaces that we have in just our existing boundary. So a question, a policy discussion with the planning commission is how much do you value open space in some of these future subdivisions? Specifically, when they're in the existing park features, within walking distance, you know. This whole list is kind of a list of priorities. What do we prioritize? What do we value most? Open space used to be the key, was the only thing in that density bonus mechanism that would be exchanged for a density uptick. And I think that we need to understand, we are a very park-heavy, park-rich community. Open spaces do lend to that rural feel that the public, you know, wants to see in, and they provided that feedback in the general plan. But that's something we could look at as maybe not being a hard requirement. Or perhaps we bump it down in the list and say, yeah, it'd be nice to get maybe a little bit of open space if it makes sense or if you're a certain distance from an existing park in the community. So maybe there's some discretion there, but something to kind of chew on. Open space, you know, in our current ordinance is king. But where we're opening this up to an idea of a lot of different public benefits in exchange for density, where does open space then fall on the list of potential outcomes?
So on the open space, does it prove enough saving? Build more dense here if you provide open space.
Elsewhere in town. It's a great idea.
I haven't been real impressed with some of the open spaces that we have. I think, really, this is your open space. So I think we have to be real careful because I think it's a big deal to residents of North Logan to try and keep that feel. And what I see doesn't, I don't think. So I don't know if you can say, yeah, you can build a subdivision here, but three miles away you can dedicate open space. To me, that doesn't fit with the subdivision going in.
Yeah, there's also, you know, a concern that parklets, little parks, they don't get maintained very well. They turn into doggy potties, you know, where all the pets in the neighborhood end up using there for their business. And they're just, you know, that's not something the city would be interested in taking on as part of our parks programs to take all the tiny parklets all over town, very hard to maintain, dragging the equipment from one place to the next to try to mow it and maintain it. So that's not really something a community park apartment would benefit from. If it's well-maintained through an HOA, then perhaps that makes sense if it's privately maintained. And it's actually accessible and it's not just an afterthought tucked in the corner where it's not really making, it's not really lending itself to any public use. It's just there. Does provide maybe some elbow room and some separation, but it's not necessarily usable, which I think more and more will become important as we infill, you know, our spaces that are, our green spaces are genuinely, you know, usable and programmable. And they're not just the afterthoughts, hard to maintain, it's just kind of hanging out there inefficient, so to speak. So the idea of having it separate from a subdivision, you know, where maybe they acquire property adjacent to an existing facility and dedicate that to the city in lieu of an, of an open space within the boundary of the subdivision, that's a good idea. The mechanism that comes to mind is a TDR, a transfer of development rights, where you would strip the rights off of the parcel becoming the park space and transfer it to the subdivision where that density would be realized. That would require us to create, you know, a new mechanism there, so then we'd have to track those development rights being transferred and extenched in one location and in another location. It can be done. I've had kind of my doubts as to whether or not it could be a mechanism that would be beneficial in North Logan because our large-scale parcels that are undeveloped are indeed, there's not, there's not a lot of them. We see TDR programs in the state more utilized in larger county settings within a county boundary, but not necessarily within a municipal boundary. So to say that it hasn't been done, it's just there's more land to work with and there's more sending areas and receiving areas within the TDR region where that could be accomplished. And it's a TDR program. It's still kind of new. I mean, the state of Utah unlocked the TDR option through legislation, you know. Have to look, but I think it's been maybe 10, 15 years ago. And it has been implemented, but time hasn't really shown how well it has worked. We just don't have a lot of, you know, longstanding history to kind of lean from. Weber County, when I worked for Weber County, we did implement a TDR ordinance in the Ogden Valley as a mechanism to try to preserve some open space, but still allow for some of those property owners to modify their land holdings and transfer those rights into areas that are identified in our general plan for a higher density. So, but that again is a larger scale program area.
I think if you considered a donation of land or the right or the development rights or even a cash-in lieu, that could go into an open space pool at the discretion of the council to procure a piece of that.
Yep.
Which is done by multiple people, but those kinds of things. I lived in a neighborhood where they had little pocket parks. I don't know. I don't believe it added much to the neighborhood.
Yeah. Although I have family that have lived in an HOA. And the HOA maintains it. They have a park, they have a pool, they have a basketball court, and it's beautiful. And they feel like they have space around them. So I think it's something to, I think an HOA maintaining something is a great idea. I don't think the city should be in charge of the subdivision's open space that's three miles down the road.
Unless it's adjacent to an existing park facility that we know we want to expand or, you know, increase its, you know, accessibility or, you know, maybe we need some adjacent parking or whatever. In that case, it could be beneficial.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I think that works well when you have, say, a large, where there's enough units that you could put a pool. A lot of our development seems to be three houses.
Yeah.
Three houses here, which is not easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's harder.
You say there's an economy to scale there.
But we also don't have a whole lot of space total in North Logan.
Yeah. Let's maybe put a pin in this because there's a few more things I'd like to show you that I think will help us with this open space question, maybe provide some more context to preview. Real quick, Gavin, your idea of a fee-in lieu, I think that makes sense. You'll see on the list further below, there's a fee-in lieu section where we've listed maybe parks, active transportation, utilities, streets. And that would be just a check that's cut to the city where we can apply it to a master plan or something on our capital improvement plan we are funding to achieve. Provides a broader public benefit in exchange for that density. But let's come back to that here in a minute.
It's like a voluntary impact fee.
Yeah, yeah. Pay-to-play, essentially.
Yeah.
Which, you know, those fee-in-luits, like, well, how do you, how do you value, how much, how much should that check be worth? You know, what is in exchange for?
There could be the incentive. If you get the extra lots you need to make the project work, it might be worth it. I like that.
Okay, let's maybe just quickly roll through here. Trails, obviously, we want to make sure we have really good connectivity. Historic preservation, this is not going to come up often. We don't have historic districts, unfortunately. We have a few historic structures in town. And when the opportunity arises, we'd really like the opportunity to preserve it. There are very few, so it's on the list. It's a required element, but anyways. We want to make sure that there's some kind of an incentive for multi-owner coordination. And I feel like this is achieved when more people put their land together. You know, especially in some of these landlocked, inner-block areas where we have fraction, fragmented or fractional ownership of multiple parcels that are, that got configured in a way that facilitates development. Maybe they're too narrow, maybe they're, you know, just landlocked or whatever. I think that this tool automatically incentivizes them to work together because then they're able to, they're able to piece together enough grocery fridge to where they can actually benefit from a density bonus. Whereas if the smaller the parent parcel is, you know, a bonus may not even be possible just without a map works out. It's not a big difference to get an extra lot. So I think that this multi-owner coordination is kind of built in. And I don't know how much weight we give to this particular option where it already benefits them to work together. But maybe we provide a marginal amount of additional weight to that à la carte item. Owner occupancy, you know, again, we want to make sure we're incentivizing owner occupancy. This may be something that a developer doesn't see as an upfront cost to them. But it's a long-term benefit to the community where we get maybe some communities where folks are able to have more pride and ownership. That kind of goes hand in hand with its attainability set aside where they indicate that they'll set aside certain units, a certain number of units within the development that are priced below the market. So essentially, they're selling them at a discount to folks that meet criteria for the ability. This is a tough one because if you are able to achieve a set aside and somebody purchases it at a discounted rate below the market, they would then be incentivized to immediately sell it for a profit. So we would need to have a restriction that. So we would need to have a D restriction that, that prevents that from occurring. And if we're able to achieve an attainability set aside, we, we want to make sure it stays appealing through multiple ownership. Uh, so maybe we put a D restriction that it's capped at no more than three percent per year of. Of equity, equity grant, uh, sorry, equity gain, um, or appreciation. Um, or if the market underperforms three percent, then that's only allowed to appreciate every year. Um, and then there's the length of some of these D restrictions is also something that we could discuss. Is it a twenty year D restriction, is it in perpetuity? How does, how does a restriction even get, uh, managed? That's one of the bigger issues, we don't have a mechanism to really track and enforce D restrictions, so. It's on the list because it's a, one of these items that, you know, may be beneficial, so it's, it's on here, but we each have.
I don't know how that one works.
There's a lot going on there, but it's on the list, maybe we discuss it further and see how we can make it work. Um, this, uh, attainability set aside, there are some new state funding mechanisms for first time home buyers. And some of those, uh, they're kind of. They're unknown, uh, they're, they're brand new, essentially the state is, and incentivized first time home buyers and there's some first. There's some like down payment assistance programs and those types of things, and maybe the developer can actually. Agree to an attainability set aside because they're using some funding to supplement and they're willing to D restrict. But more to, to discuss and to study there. Um, let's push through here quick. Accessibility, view share preservation, water wise landscaping, street trees and. Street trees are already required, but this idea is that we have a developer actually put cash into an escrow fund. And that the city is then able to place trees if they die within a certain number of years. If they all magically live after five years, then they'll use that, and they need to go plant trees in neighborhoods that they'd like to, uh, street trees.
I like this concept.
Yeah.
It's one of my favorites on the list.
If it works.
Yeah.
Uh, offsite improvements, um, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, throughout the city that we could use funding for. So if we wanted to install a sidewalk, yeah, along one of our safe routes to schools. That maybe is missing a sidewalk or needs a sidewalk replaced, um, or if we need some offsite water improvement or system enhancement. I don't know. Uh, those are things we can't normally ask of a developer, but if we're looking for a density bonus, then it depends eligible for us to negotiate. Uh, dedication of surplus water shares, uh, donation to the city's signage and layfinding master plan fund. We are, uh, we are on the cusp of going through a signage and layfinding master plan. We have an RFP out to, you know, select someone to help us with that. Uh, we anticipate once that plan is done, that we have beautiful signs that are designed, but nowhere to play from. So we'd like to kind of, you know, increase our signage branding uniformity, you know, placemaking throughout town. It's an idea, this is kind of just like a, a fee in lieu or a donation kind of an item. Um, if people are adjacent to the city center and they elect to utilize the city center, um, architectural requirements. You know, so they follow that New England architectural requirement. That might be worth considering. Stormwater system, uh, that are, in addition to their onsite impacts, if they would make accommodation for uphill stormwater. Uh, demand, it might be beneficial if it can accommodate some uphill stormwater. And then fencing is maybe, I see fencing is probably the least, you know, beneficial here, but maybe we get some fencing along some of our. Uh, our corridors where we don't have homes fronting on the road, but, uh, they're rear facing to the road. Nice to have a nice fencing element to some of those corridors, like on twenty five hundred, we, we were able to negotiate an extra fence on that. That frontage, but, uh, that's on the list. Couple of things, we don't anticipate granting density bonuses in geo hazard areas that have really sense. Um, the kind of thing that we need to change or see them just stay. Where it says unless the building footprint of all lots can be moved outside of non developed areas. Any subdivision within a geo hazard area is going to have non developed areas, so I'm just gonna clarify that. And then lastly, we wouldn't want to have a density bonus in an area that has a low pressure, uh. Is in a low pressure area where we, uh, we identify that there's some fire suppression deficiencies in that area account. Unless they're willing to do those offsite improvements to, you know, allow for those deficiencies to be in the revenue. Okay, let's put this aside, um.
I can add one thing, it'd be nice to have a, you can't go more, even if you bought all of these things. You can't go below X percent of the original zone you're in or something.
So they're not allowed to underperform his own in his exit.
So say you're in a one acre zone, you give down to eight hundred per acre if you do either one of these things.
Yeah, so that, that's the next conversation we'd have, there's a minimum, we've got to identify what the, the, the minimum threshold is. Now, that's been a concern all along is, you know, we, we can't just put in. Six thousand square foot lots in a one acre zone, you know, that's just by far, uh, subverting the zoning intent, right? So that, that's what we need to discuss, um, I've tried to put together something to. Quantify, wrap your head around what this means, so that's your next long piece of paper here. What I've done is I've put together a couple of tables that communicate a current mechanism in our code, our current density bonus. Uh, so if folks, so that's this first table on your page here. Um, I think if you look at RE one, that's gonna be your, the best line for us to make sense of. Because it's kind of round numbers. Um, but in the RE one zone, uh, this first, uh. This first cell, this is base allowed density in lots per acre. In the RE one zone, um, if you were to subdivide a lot, you need to have exactly one acre. You would also need light waving to dedicate right of way for the road providing activity to come to that lot. So there's an estimate that ten percent of a ten parcel would be dedicated as right of way. And that's where this number comes from, is where we assume ten percent, you can get. Uh, you can't get one lot out of one acre, you need zero point nine lots out of one acre. So if you blow that up to a larger scale, if you have a ten acre parcel, you have to dedicate ten percent of right of way. You then have, uh, nine acres to develop, so you can get nine lots out of ten acres. So that's just a standard subdivision, somebody has ten acres, they wanna divide it into one acre lots. You could reasonably get nine lots out of ten acres after you dedicate your right of way, okay? So that's what this, this first table, you know, it starts off saying, what's the base density allowed? What is the estimated amount of right of way? This table comes directly from the code, by the way. So this hasn't been manipulated, that's further down on the table, so this is just our baseline of what we currently allow. If somebody in this RE one zone wants to dedicate open space, they are allowed to dedicate up to thirty four point four four percent. Uh, or sorry, it's just a flat thirty four. Um, if they dedicate thirty four percent, they are then allowed to utilize this number, one point two one. As the number of lots per acre. So in that type of a situation, if you then look on this larger table below. Under RE one base, you see where it shows that, base RE one. Ten acre parcel at zero point nine lots per acre is nine lots. That's where everybody has forty three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet per lot. Um, if you look at the next one down, the bonus line for RE one. A ten acre parcel at one point two one lots per acre equals twelve lots. So you could get twelve lots out of ten acres if you dedicated three point four acres of open space. Does that make sense? You are then allowed to have lots as small as twenty thousand two hundred square feet. So essentially, under our existing ordinance, in the RE one zone, if you dedicate the maximum amount of open space. You can get twelve lots, those lots are twenty thousand two hundred square feet minimum. So that's just slightly half of what a normal subdivision would, would allow, okay? So keep that in mind, that's the, that's the benchmark of our existing ordinance that we're trying to maybe compare against, okay? If we then look at this next line down, bonus plus fifty percent. This is where I just took a first stab at what if we were to modify these ratios? To allow for other à la carte items to be granted, uh, instead of just open space, okay? This, this is just our first stab at fifty percent, we can look at twenty five percent, we could look at thirty percent, et cetera. So what that does, if we look at fifty percent reduction in open space. So we're still using a hypothetical ten acre parcel, but if we look under the RE one with a ten acre parcel, the math is just easier to do. If we reduce the open space requirement from that, uh, let's see, three point four. Acres in a ten acre parcel, and we say, the maximum you'd need to dedicate is one point seven two acres. How many lots would that then allow you to build? So ten acres at, let's see. The math works, trust me, I just needed to freshen my mind, you know, it's confusing. Yeah, but what I'm trying to look at is this one point eight one lots per acre. Let me go back up, this other table is where I did some of these calculations. Yeah, fifty percent of the nine, which is. One point two nine, okay, that's where this one point eight comes from. This one point eight, one five lots per acre is adding that fifty percent to the number of lots per acre that could be allowed. So you're going from one point two one, adding fifty percent gets you to one point eight one five lots per acre. So you then go from twelve lots on ten acres to eighteen lots on ten acres. That would require your lot size to come down to seventeen thousand five hundred. Uh, when compared to this, uh, traditional bonus lot minimum. You know, it's, it's not too far off, if you look further up in the second table, there's a comparison. Uh, if you look at the RE one line. The original base lot density for a one acre zone is forty three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. That's a, that's one acre in square feet, converted to square feet. Under this fifty percent, uh, bonus, um, addition, you would go down to seventeen five. Which is forty, about forty percent of a traditional one acre subdivision, okay? Keep in mind, the original again is twenty two, sorry, twenty thousand two hundred. So if we look at this table again, this, uh, RE one section of the larger table. This center column that is highlighted is really where hopefully that gives you a sense of what these changes would equate to. If a subdivision were to be created under those allowances. So we start at one acre as the, the traditional, uh, one acre subdivision requirement. Our current ordinance allows for twenty thousand two hundred, under a fifty percent, uh, increase scenario. That would bring those lot sizes down to seventeen five. So that's, that's kind of a, how does that feel, kind of a question.
But you also get half the open space.
Correct, that is correct, so in order to allow for these additional lots to fit into the subdivision, you get less open space. Um, you get smaller lots, you're, you're essentially just a little bit smaller, a little less open space. What you do get is those other à la carte items that, you know, are required, um, or elected by the developer.
So this would be total allowances, not just open space, so you'd check that and then you're à la carte adding up to that.
And that's if open space is a required item from the list, maybe it's not that big of a deal and they say, look, we don't really want. A smaller piece of open space in this development, we'd rather have architecture, we'd rather have, you know. All of these other items from, from the list. Um, so this is, what we're trying to get out of this conversation tonight is a gut check. This is a policy decision with wide ranging impacts depending on how, you know, this, this comes together. Um, and, and I think that there, one, a few of the things that we need to look at is. I don't think this is gonna be appropriate in several areas, the smaller zones. When you look at the smaller zones, R one twelve, for example, you go all the way down to fifty four hundred square feet. Which is probably smaller than a single family home should occupy. You don't get much yard, you're really, you're really not able to get much out of a single family. In that case, if we're interested in even using this in the R one twelve zone. You have to think about townhomes attached product, which I don't know is something that we want to open that. Uh, can of worms, let me, let me show you why this could be. At least we need to understand how that would be impactful, so if we look at the zoning map. Keep in mind, everything in this tan color, this is our, our one twelve zone. So, um, let's look at, uh, just, just next door to us at the city office, okay, so here's twenty five hundred north. Here's six hundred east, here's the city office that we're sitting in right now. Here's smiling H phase one, these are quarter acre lots to the south of us. To the north, there's a future phase that could be developed, it's all R one twelve. If this ordinance were adopted and they use, if we have that same fifty percent bonus, uh, and it's allowed in R one twelve. You can expect either a fifty four hundred square foot lot, with maybe some open space, maybe some high, you know, quality architecture. Jails and whatever else from now or the rest that they choose. But was that the intent to put townhomes in some of these areas that are pre-existing R one twelve? Uh, I think there, there might be a few select areas where that might make sense in transition from the city center. Or other higher density places, but where R one twelve is broadly applied throughout the city, it's hard to pick and choose where that. Makes sense. So when we go back and look at this table, I think R one twelve is probably not a suitable, uh, zoning district. R one fifteen is probably also kind of on the verge of where I maybe think is reasonable. If you get down to sixty eight hundred square feet lots in an R one fifteen. You know, that's, what that looks like is, um. Is the west view subdivision, a lot of these lots are kind of in that range of size. And they're, I think that's kind of where single family makes sense and below this, it starts to make less sense for acreage. So if you look at maybe, uh, the acreage on this piece. Point one five acres.
You say that's my neighborhood, you can take my house.
My, my gut check for you is I think doubling the number of dwellings in a zone materially affects. Going from say nine to twelve is one thing, nine to eighteen is, is a pretty big.
It's a big jump, right?
It's a big jump, even if, even if you're in an R one twelve, I mean, you're now, the number of. Thirty one units, fifty eight, it's nearly a double A unit.
Right.
So it doesn't feel right, but at the same time. How we handle more people.
Yeah, and, and so this is all, this is all trade off, right, it's like, what is it worth, what are we willing to do in exchange for what and how much?
And, and at what point are you, at what point is the, the incentive, the benefit that the city gets from the incentive worth doubling the zone, right?
That's what I, that's what I personally have struggled with trying to quantify with the creation of this mechanism is. What is this, what is this worth?
Well, I think what's the benefit to the people too.
That's a better way to put it.
I think, not the city, it's the people that are gonna live there.
The people in the community.
Which are part of the community, dude, I think we can slam a ton of houses in a place, but is that really? The best thing to do?
That's a great way to put it, thanks Dan.
So could you do something like this and just leave out the bonus of fifty? So, cause the base and bonus is much easier for me.
Yeah, so keep in mind the bonus line in this table, in all these tables, this is the current ordinance for our open space. If they dedicate the appropriate amount of open space, they can.
Then they automatically get that.
So that's kind of the baseline that I, I feel like we need to work off of, you know, what we already allow. Um, and then this third line, the bonus plus fifty is just, this is just an initial stab. At trying to get a sense of what is or is not appropriate given the existing zone. Now, what we could do is we could add several more lines to this, where we could do maybe a fifteen percent, you know, twenty five percent. And maybe try to see what maybe feels like it's, it's appropriate. Again, it all comes down to quantifying the benefit. Um, if we go back to the à la carte list, you'll see I've got question marks next to most, if not all of these. Because they're extremely difficult to quantify cost, benefit to the community. And so how do? they're extremely difficult to quantify cost, benefit to the community, and so how do we weight each of these line items? My fear is if we even put away any of these line items, that the development community will, they'll do a financial analysis and they'll, they'll choose the ones to gain food. And so my, my initial thought that I've, I've kind of started thinking about is, what is the value add? And the, you know, maybe there's a developer that comes in with a subject property and they say, look, I'd like to get, you know, this, this, uh, this added density in the DRC or whatever body is, is granted the discretion to use developments. Uh, or the planning commission, we have to have some kind of a baseline understanding of the cost. Um, not necessarily the cost, but what is the, what is the total bottom line revenue created by each of the additional lots in the subdivision? If each lot is creating another twenty-five thousand dollars and, and just pure profit, after all the expenses are said and done. Maybe the city would say, okay, we want to have fifty percent of that added back in the form of these à la carte items. And that's where maybe we can say, hey, uh, we have some offsite improvements that we, we know are going to cost X amount of dollars. Would you be willing to, uh, to, uh, to use that option in this development? I think some of these items will be applicable to some developments. I think in other developments, they won't be as necessary or desirable. Um, and it'll just be a one-off kind of a discussion to see what development needs, what items most. Um, we, we do have some lines out trying to get some of that data from our development community. We reached out to some of our developers to see if they'd be willing to, to provide some of that information. Uh, often we, we expect that information to be provided in a, during MBA, where they want to keep some of those, those pieces of information, uh, close to the chest, which is understandable, but at least it gives, you know, the city a benchmark to say, if we're going to fate seven more lots in the subdivision and we anticipate the, the profit, you know, the revenue on these to be, twenty-five K per lot, maybe we ask for, you know, seventeen, you know, à la carte value creation. Unless you guys have other ideas, I'm open to suggestions.
I do, I do love that, I said earlier that we need to put a cap or whatever we call it. On, on it where they feel crazy.
Well, I think if you weight it correctly, that you get really high quality developments in those spaces. They're not just shoving houses in, right? That's the point is that we make them be really high quality developments that maybe are less offensive to the neighbors who are less dense, and that's the point of weighting these correctly, which makes it really a challenge, but to get the desired result out of it for that benefit.
Trying to create the win-win.
And it's going to be interesting who's going to decide, oh, yours is high quality enough. I mean, we've had discussions like this before.
Well, like, that's, that's the waiting, right? Like.
It's, it's a big, it's a big discussion with a developer.
We're trying to create this as an administrative tool. We're trying not to send it into the legislative realm where it then becomes a public hearing and essentially a zone change request. We're trying to create this tool where the development community can say, I'm going to create a high quality development, I'm going to integrate these items because I know there's a certainty of outcome and how many lots I'm able to get based on the ordinance. That's, that's our hope, that we don't go to a legislative process. Now, we could have used, we could have explored a PUD, which is a planned unit development. Essentially, it's a legislatively approved arm wrestle negotiation that leads to a bespoke master plan community. Uh, North Logan has one, uh, here in the, uh, in the city, that's the, uh, Aspen Meadows, just here next to us. Uh, we don't have the PUD option in our ordinance. Other communities do, and that's how they provide this flexibility, but it becomes a negotiation and it's, it's not, not administrative.
With the PUDs, Colorado PUDs almost exclusively produce subdivision. I, so I would say, my gut check on this is that where, where we have the base and the bonus, I wouldn't want to go beyond the bonus, but I would allow, I would want to allow developers multiple ways to get to that bonus. I think if we're going to double the density, we should just be honest and rezone it to the next one.
That, that's a very good point.
You know, two becomes a one, a one becomes a twenty, a twenty becomes a ten, just say it. We're gonna, don't sneak up into a new zone.
Right.
Twenty-five percent extra makes sense with, with the mix of things they could do. That, that's my take.
Yeah.
I, you know, I don't know the formula thing, but if I was just looking through this and I saw, you know, under the RE one, at nine to twelve is three lots. And what would the formula be so that the bonus would be three lot, three more, like fifteen? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like down here, R one fifteen, twenty-five to thirty-one is six lots. What if it went thirty-one to thirty-seven rather than, do you understand what I'm saying? So.
Now, now, keep in mind, let's look at this RE one real quick. So, uh, this, you know, this progression, we're going from nine to twelve to eighteen. You think about, you know, on a ten, on a ten acre parcel, getting, you know, three more lots, you know, how much additional value is being created with those three lots? How much can actually be provided back in the form of à la carte menu selections? And does that, does that incentivize the developer not to even use this mechanism? So there's, there's a balancing act here where we want this to be the option that every developer chooses because we want it to be weighted to where it's a win-win, where it's clearly the best in their interest, it's clearly the best in the city's interest to get high quality development. But there's going to be, you know, how much value is created by these mechanisms? There's, it's a, there's a balancing act, because Gavin, you're right, if we just, if we allow so much bonus that it doesn't even look like RE one, not even close, it's a disservice. We're just, we're kind of working around the zoning, you know, it's, it's kind of just a.
And a developer is going to want a fifty percent.
Right.
And I think my gut feeling, I think it's kind of similar, fifty percent is way too much.
Now, there's, there's a way that we could model this. If we had a lot of data that was correct, current, based on current construction costs, current land values. There's a way you could model this. It's just trying to pull all that together is beyond, you know, our, our capacity. But we want to, we want to get this right. We don't necessarily want to adopt something that becomes a, you know, an unintended consequence because the devil's in the details, so to speak. We want it to be beneficial to the city. We want it to be beneficial enough to the developer to choose this mechanism. Uh, but we also want to be true to the zoning, and if it truly is a zone, an upzone, it's just considered an upzone for.
And go through the political process.
And you gotta, you gotta go through. So, um, I think that's good feedback to maybe explore the current bonus allowance with maybe a reduction in open space in exchange for some of these other à la carte menu items. Do you feel as if there's a desire to explore a different bonus percentage? Do you want to look at a fifteen or a twenty-five and get a gut check on those?
Well, maybe fifteen. Fifty's way too much. I, I think fifty's way too much.
I, I think it's worth exploring other scenarios as well.
I think.
I, I had a thought as well. Um, I think one of my concerns is cherry picking, you know, the, the developer will figure out. And as markets change, you know, they may, we, we may get pigeonholed into everyone's picking the same incentive over and over again. Um, if, if you categorize these, put them in a couple of different things, and then said, pick one from each category, then you kind of spread that out instead of putting everything, all your, right? So, um, that's just a thought, maybe to spread out that risk.
Yeah, I, to answer your, your question, I would say, no, don't go through. Use these tools to allow them to achieve, but I think if you're gonna, you're gonna have more than twenty-five percent additional density, I think that feels too much for me.
They can already get to that bonus or to the current one through open space though, right? That's like already the standard. So going à la carte to get there.
Yeah, and the open space in a lot of places is garbage.
Yeah, but that would, that would anticipate a lesser open space dedication. Um.
Pretty close.
Okay. Um. If, if you guys would like, I'm not going to spend the time in the meeting because we've got, we're, we're short on time. There is another document in the folder where I've, I've put together a couple of examples, both locally here in North Logan and then also one elsewhere in the valley. Um, there's two that use the, uh, North Logan bonus, uh, option. You can see what that equated to in the real world. There's one, you guys are familiar with these statement, we just reviewed that, you know, this last couple of months, that used the bonus, but we also, we pushed that bonus further through the development agreement where we granted a few more lots, we reduced that open space to get some offsite improvements. We use that subdivision, uh, it just happened to work while we were trying to think through some of this, this mechanism. We explored with that developer and they graciously, you know, entertained our, our, uh, our exploration. Uh, but we, we ended up with an outcome that is different from our current bonus, where there's less open space dedicated, a few more lots added, offsite improvements that materially improve the outcome of the subdivision. So if that example is in this document, if you want to look at that and compare it to a couple of other examples, I'm trying to give us enough information to get this gut check and understand the impact, because it's hard to see on a piece of paper with a table with formulas. It'd be nice to see what it looks like in, in practice.
How much more did they get? Is it in there?
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
How much more did they get from the offsite improvements?
Yeah, let's look at it just real quick. So here's, here's a subject property, um. Fifteen point two six gross acres, uh, zoned R one twenty. Um. Let's go down one more.
I mean, twenty-nine to thirty-seven units.
Yeah, so under the bonus, if they had done the math and just used the bonus in our ordinance, given their gross acreage, they could have achieved thirty-seven lots. Um, this subdivision is very strangely configured just because of the way the property lines work out, and so it doesn't lend itself to efficient access and roadways. Uh, but under, under the ordinance, they could have gotten thirty-seven lots with lot sizes down to eleven-four, from twenty thousand square feet down to eleven-four. And they would have been required to dedicate three point eight one five acres. That's the maximum in the R one twenty zone is a twenty-five percent dedication. The way we approved it was, uh, we allowed them to dedicate two point one, or two point one acres, which was, uh, thirteen point two percent uh, open space. And they were able to achieve, achieve thirty-six lots. And the reason why, the only reason why they were able to get thirty-six is because they were allowed to use these two flag lots to, to provide access. There simply wasn't enough frontage on the road network to meet the minimum zone standards. So that's, that's the modification we made through the development agreement, the legislatively adopted development agreement to use our existing tool, modify it slightly to get the outcome that was, was achieved with offsite improvements.
And their open space is HO, uh, HS, HOA, I was going to say HSA, the HOA, and they're, they're maintaining it and they have three point eight acres.
We've got two point one one.
Oh, down here. Have you gotten a lot of flack back from that? Because I have.
We had some folks reach out. Initially, they had wondered if this was a zone change because in the notice for the subdivision, we indicated that this is the bonus density subdivision with zoning modifications considered in the development agreement. And I think when folks read that announcement, they, uh, they assumed that it was a zone change. Uh, it wasn't a zone change, it was using a mechanism with some modifications. Now, it's a two acre zone and most of these lots are just shy of eleven thou, or sorry, twelve thousand square feet. It's essentially a quarter acre and half acre zone. That was using our mechanism. These lots are not substandard to the requirements for any other bonus density subdivision. So they are still at or above the eleven thousand four hundred square feet that was required under our current ordinance. We just allow them to dedicate less open space to allow them to get these two flag lots, which helped them to pay for those offsite improvements. So this, this is probably the best recent local example of this idea in practice, that you can use to wrap your head around impact. Now, there's, there's two others in this. I'm happy to go through them if you guys want to hang after a lot of the sensitive of the term. Um, that maybe helps wrap your head around. Um. I'll, I'll do one more quick one because this kind of lends to Gavin's thought of maybe acreage to make, maybe full open spaces. Uh, this, this project is in town, it's my neighborhood, it's eighty acres and it's a mixed use neighborhood. There's, uh, single family, there's twin homes, uh, and townhomes. So it's kind of a blend of all those different product types. Um, they, they have quite a bit more open space, but they have enough acreage to where the HOA can have a clubhouse and a pool and some of those other amenities. Um, but that, if you guys want to look at this in more detail, it might help you compare and contrast to what is in those tables. You know, what is the impact of allowing a density bonus and up to a certain amount? This particular project started with a slightly smaller zoning classification. It started at about an R one ten. The base zoning was a nine thousand nine hundred square foot lot, if they were to subdivide just single family homes, um, out of this, this zoning. This was actually a PUD, is how it was reviewed and approved.
I was going to say, there's, this is exactly, it looks like a PUD, because you got a mix of products, you got, you got a clubhouse, this doesn't, this doesn't form normally.
Yeah, we don't have eighty acre vacant parcels in North Logan, so that kind of helps you kind of also put together what is unique about us versus others. So maybe look at this. I will throw a couple more line items into this density bonus, just to compare and contrast. Maybe I'll do like a fifteen and a twenty-five just to see. Um, we have more work to do to quantify those bonus items. You know, how, how much are they worth in exchange for how much? That's the mechanism I'm really struggling to, to put, um, to paper and, and make it make sense. So that's where we're at. I, I think your, your feedback, your feedback is helpful. From what I'm taking is the current bonus is probably the upper ceiling of what we would want to entertain. Are reasonable to assume?
Yeah.
Okay. With, with the understanding. Okay, maybe we'll, let's explore twenty-five or maybe what I'll do is like a fifteen and a thirty-five to split the gap maybe further. Um, also with the understanding that there would be smaller open space dedication compared to our current ratio, right? In exchange for some of those other à la carte options, where they could still dedicate as much open space if they chose that option. But they can choose a smaller open space option and other items on the list. Is that what I'm taking?
So you're saying they could still choose smaller open space, more houses?
I guess they are tied, tied to the hip. Because if they dedicate fewer open space, either they can have larger lots or additional lots to take up that that additional space in the boundary of the subdivision.
So, so if we just take a step back, what's driving us to allow bonus at all?
Yeah.
I, I mean, if you look at our, at our master plan, or we have some required elements because the state requires us to have some, which they're wanting to decrease density and things like that, so that's one driver, but from what we, well, from what we pass, what are the other drivers?
Yeah, I honestly think that the, the original intent from our current ordinance and also the intent of the, the new general plan is the desire to have this rural feel and try to keep some of that, um, open space that lends itself to maybe more of a rural environment. I think that's really the impetus of trying to preserve open spaces, um, how the general plan calls for us to try to achieve that. The only mechanisms to do so are to just outright purchase property and, if it is one over top of it, do a bonus density, where we then, you know, are able to encumber a piece of land as open space in exchange for the density being, um, clustered, you know, adjacent or elsewhere, or a TDR, where we exchange density in one part of the town and, and moving to another.
So if they, if we didn't have, um, so as it is now, if there's no bonus, the bases, you have, you have ten acres, you get to build twenty-five lots.
Yeah, depending on the, on the zone that you're in, the boat, so the baseline on all of these, um, that's just a traditional subdivision. That's just no open space.
And are they required to put any open space in that one?
So if, if you do a traditional subdivision, we have three options in our code. We can do a traditional subdivision, where you just take a piece of land, split it up by the minimum acreage per each lot, minimum frontage on the street, minimum acreage. Traditional subdivision. We have what we call a density determinant subdivision, which I call lot averaging. Where some lots are allowed to be a little bit smaller, as long as other lots are a little bit bigger than the average is meeting the minimum for the zone under the DRC page. A little bit more flexible, but the majority of our subdivisions use that. Because the configuration of parent parcels, you know, they're not always perfect rectangles and not themselves to efficient subdivision. And then we have the density bonus, which is just density granted above the base in exchange for open space. Any of those three are options to land owners or developers. There's not, there's not a mechanism that says you have to use. This mechanism that we've been exploring today and that our general plan wants us to look into is to try to achieve other, uh, benefits, uh, to, to encourage high quality longstanding development. Uh, well, maybe open space isn't the only item on this. So I think that the, the general plan calls for us to try to do all of these things that are all aspirational, open space is still, you know, an aspiration, but the question then is, like we posed at the beginning of the discussion, how much do you value open space in our community as it grows? We have a lot of park space per capita compared to other communities in the state. Uh, and maybe we devalue that, maybe that's why we just swing our hands, say, you know, open spaces, being that's what we want. Or we say, you know, maybe we don't want these hard to maintain, hard to access open spaces, um, we would like to explore other options.
I think when people were giving input for the master plan, when they say open space, they're not thinking of parklet. They're thinking like a ten acre alfalfa field. And so trading it for a parklet doesn't make sense to meet that goal. They want more density so that you can keep the bigger open space.
That's a good observation. They want to see the farmer field next door for as long as possible.
That was my comment. I think when people say we want, so our job is to give people an open space filled with more density. And that's kind of impossible in certain ways.
The, the ratio unfortunately is, is higher than most think, you know, to, to preserve that much open space, you've really got to cluster tight. And that's where I think folks realize that, oh, five thousand square foot lot or a town home in order to preserve a reasonable amount of open spaces.
But I think Deidre's correct. I agree with her. When people were commenting on all of this idea, their open space idea was not living next to park. It was having an open space in their subdivision.
Or an HOA having a clubhouse, like that doesn't do me any good in my neighborhood, right? I, I do love hearing the sprinklers gone on the alfalfa field next to my house. Like, I really love going to sleep to that in the summer and it's not, it's not elk ridge and the soccer fields that I love to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's what, I think if we did a poll, I think that's what people would, were thinking when they thought about open space.
That's TBRs.
Yeah, that's, that's much larger scale, um, and as I'm kind of thinking them through that, we don't have, we don't have parent parcels large enough to create large open space, um. That's, that's a tougher topic for sure, cause all of those fields are privately owned, all of the zoning on them has development rights.
Right.
Yeah, so it may just not be a reasonable expectation and we may need to just call it what it is, that it is not reasonable to expect to have as many farmer's fields as we have now unless we find a mechanism to buy out that property owner. Uh, that, that's a bigger, higher level discussion.
So one area that did do that is the Boulder, Colorado area, they, they had county taxes, state taxes, city taxes that would go into a fund, which is and anybody couldn't afford to live in Boulder, you and your five grand friends would travel across all that open space every day on a thirty minute. So that, that's kind of on our rather end of the spectrum. That's what they did, they bought big chunks of farmland, they imposed taxes.
Yeah, they imposed on themselves, they voted to pay for that open space, which we have done here locally recently. You know, there was a ballot measure and a good cost to set up a, a fund, it's like a two million dollar fund at the county. That, that amount of money doesn't go far with real estate, so I know that they're trying to find opportunities and, uh, it, it's a drop in the bucket. So large scale open space, it's, that's a, that's a challenge for sure.
Which I think is why you incentivize more density, right? Even though it feels uncomfortable. If that's what we really want in our community, then we have to be okay with more density.
If that really truly is how you achieve it, then the question is, is do you really value the open space that much? Is it worth it?
Almost seems like you need a, you need it, you need zoning weighted to where you have more options for large parcels and more options for small parcels and then just a few options in between. But I, I don't know that that even lends itself to market what people want, cause what people looking for is what they can afford and that's the midsize. So, I don't know, so you need challenge.
I think it's interesting to look at the different percentages, see what would happen.
Yep.
Yeah, if, if, for example, you look at how the math works here and how the ratios come together. E, if we were to increase the amount of open space required, like fifty percent dedication instead of thirty five or, or twenty five. So we're increasing the open space to get a much larger chunk, you would most certainly have attached housing product next door given the existing development rights in most of these zones. That's how the ratios work and how the math will come together, just as I think through it, you know, they're playing with these numbers all day today, trying to, trying to just get something for us to chew on and if, right now, this fifty percent, uh, bonus, this, this plus fifty percent scenario that we're looking at, it reduces the open space by fifty percent and adds a little bit more, adds quite a bit more density. And it is resulting in lot sizes in the current zone that are uncomfortable. So if we were to explore doubling the amount of open space required, we'd have to more than, uh, we'd have to cut the lot size in half, almost exponentially, it would come down more than fifty percent. Be almost a hundred percent more to, to get that to fit. Large scale open space, that's tough.
I mean, to, to achieve large, you, you gotta, you have to generate enough income either through taxes or in, you know, in lieu or bonus. And then buy the land or buy development rights, that's.
But I, I think, yes, I get that. And I'm not talking about large open space. I'm more concerned about little teeny tiny houses on little teeny tiny lots, a thousand houses in the neighborhood. That's more concerning to me than, than saving large open spaces. I think that's what we need to be careful in what we allow.
Yeah, and that's where, you know, these, these single family home lots, you know, the scenario where R one twelve would get down to fifty four, you know, under this scenario. At that point, it's like, hey guys, you don't even have enough room in your backyard to put a trampoline and have a barbecue with your family. Um, in that case, that's where this doesn't make sense and you really should explore attached housing. Townhomes with a meaningful open space next door for, for kids to actually throw a football and actually to be able to recreate. Versus everybody trying to have their own little patch of green in the backyard. It's, it gets to a point where it just doesn't make sense.
Like in your higher, your Elk Mountain, those tightly packed, attached, you have that big kind of central park down the middle.
Yeah, and that's, I don't know, let me pull it up here, this, there's a hundred and fifty townhomes in this, in this quadrant, I counted them. There's, there are five units, there's three of them, yeah. And they do have, you know, a meaningful open space. I do hear and I do see all these emails from where the HOA is asking people to please pick up after their pets and please pick after their kids' toys that get left out every day. But at least it's sized and it's consolidated in an area that can be used. You know, we, we played, we had turkey bowl with a couple of our neighborhood members on that field because it's big enough and you could actually throw a football, you know, several yards and such usable open space, but you can see the amount of density that is needed in order to create that meaningful amount of open space. There's other portions over here that are considered open space around these townhomes. Where honestly, it's just a waste of water because they're small enough that we can't do anything with it. And honestly, I, I think our HOA is, is trying to find a way to, 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 more of a water wise, so we can just tear them as you can close. They're, they're, they're just doggy bodies, they're not really used for much of anything else. But that, that just, I think this is a good indication of, hey, if you want good, meaningful open space, you do, the, the amount of density is almost exponential to achieving that outcome.
But we also in North Logan have City Center where we have a lot of density. Um, to, to work with.
Yeah, it's a place where it's appropriate, that's why we're having that check conversation of what is appropriate in these areas. There's a lot of language in the, in the general plan that talks about meaningful, well, well thought out infield development that is, it is, um, there's cognizance in the surroundings, either existing neighborhoods, you know, considers the impacts of these neighborhoods, so it can't be a drastic change from one, one spot to the next in the same zone. So that's, that's where we're trying to get these ratios and see if this mechanism is viable.
Yeah, let's try it with the new numbers.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll play with the numbers a bit. Um, this, this is a Google, uh, cloud based document, so I'll, I'll throw these in there. I might shoot out an email to you guys, um, maybe you guys look at it in the interim, I don't know if you have a different gut check. My hope, I'm hoping that we can wrap up the, the larger text amendment project within the next month or two. We've had the book open on our code for six months, it's, I'm getting a little anxious, we need to just clarify what we've worked on. And if, if this tool requires some more, you know, poking and prodding, cause it is very technical, it's the most technical element of our code updates. I'm okay to adjust of the, with the known, you know, structural updates and cleanup updates that we're, we're planning to do. And we can, we can take our current bonus density, uh, mechanism, leave it in there. We will change the dedication to the city to, uh, be privately, uh, owned, operated in space. With the caveat that if it's adjacent to an existing park structure, then we are, so that it, that it makes sense, we'll, we'll kind of negate that language. But I, I feel like this is gonna take some, some detailed thought before we're comfortable adopting it. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at. I'd like to kind of button up what we've got, get that released into our code and then you know, maybe we're comfortable with some of the, some things that we work on here, but if it's gonna take longer than, you know, a month or two from now, I'd, I'd like to maybe put this on, on, uh, you know, we'll continue to work session it, but maybe keep it as future consideration. Uh, but we'll see, we'll see where we go.
Do you have an expectation of when you'd get information from developers? You did send that out, right, requesting that?
Yeah, we've, we've requested from a few, um. I think a lot are hesitant to provide a lot of that information, some trade secrets and some, some things like that. We have had, had some that have indicated that they would be willing to provide us with some information. I don't know that it's gonna be enough to wrap our head around every situation because some developments are different based on the zoning and the profit margins are different based on where a project is and the home's product type, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm trying to just get a very, uh, broad understanding of value creation, you know? Yep, so we'll keep, we'll look at it. It'd be nice if we had just a super robust model that was already set up and had all the variables that we could plug in and see what it says. But, uh, that might take some more time and effort. Okay?
Yeah.
If you have any other shower thoughts or anything as you roll over this in your mind, you know, shoot me a message. Um, uh, this is one of those things where it's like, this mechanism is a cool idea. Is it viable? Will it do what we want it to do? I think it, it could, but we need to be precise.
Good.
Okay. Um, that's it. We'll probably, uh, like I mentioned, we'll try to get to the end of this, uh, project in the next month or two. Uh, likely we'll schedule a final public hearing on all of the code amendments or the commission to make a formal recommendation. I'd like to give this to the developer.
Awesome. Scott, thank you. Thanks for your hard work. Thanks for listening to us, everybody. Thanks for your comments. Any more staff business to discuss, Scott?
One more thing. I'm gonna open up the agenda. There's, there's been a few things. I've been with the city for, well, they're not for years now. And there's, there's a few ideas I've had to how the planning commission functions and how we have uh, established our agendas, how we've had our work sessions, um, and, uh, one of the thoughts I've had is with our work sessions, um, I'd like to, on the agenda, indicate that we will adjourn for the regular meeting and reconvene in work session in the conference room. This type of a discussion is harder when we're not around the table and we don't have the ability to see text clearly just given the scope of the material we're trying to do. Um, I've had experiences early in my career where we would, we'd sit down at the table and it would be much more like a work session. It would still be open to the public, we would make sure that, you know, the public is, is able to, uh, to, to come with us into that room. If the evolvent doors open, it'll probably create some signage, so even from the parking lot, we know that if we convene in work session, there's where you would go. If there's items that are very, uh, uh, very public, uh, heavy and maybe have a lot of folks join us, um, we may just stay in here because you may be involved in a public meeting, uh, conference room. So on the agenda itself, um, we would, we would adjourn, reconvene in work session, everything that's clear that that's what is expected, phenomenon, period. The other thing, um, I've noticed is other communities, especially in these, they get longer agendas, they'll put certain administrative items in a consent agenda. And it allows for us to make one motion to adopt multiple consent items. Where we don't need to go into a lot of detail on some of these things. Although if you'd like to, if you have a concern or something that you would like to discuss at more length, you could motion to pull it out of consent, put it on a regular agenda, review it in more detail. I think that might help us to streamline some of these items. Uh, the expectation being with a consent agenda is that everybody reviews, you know, enough ahead of time that they're, they're comfortable approving the consent agenda under a single motion. Um, there's also, so something to consider, you know, transparency and just awareness in the community of certain things that are coming to, uh, the community bottom lines. Subdivisions, for example, they're administrative, um, and they, if they meet code, they have to be adopted, right, they have to be approved. That's something that could certainly be in a consent agenda, uh, but it could also be, if you prefer, you could have as a regular item to be discussed in a little bit more length. Put more, uh, details on the public record, so folks online, uh, or that are watching, you know, later if they're looking through, reading media recordings, they can get more detailed information. That, that's something we can just discuss. Do you, do you want to add subdivisions into the consent agenda? Do you want to keep them as regular items and review them in detail? Uh, conditional use permits, I think you need in the consent agenda, if they're, you know, short term rentals, maybe smaller conditional use permits. If it's something that you feel is going to require more, uh, discussion, you can motion to pull it out and put it on to the regular. Subdivisions, I kind of go back and forth and like this to whether or not we put them in a consent agenda or leaving them. You guys have any thoughts on that?
Mine is on the first one you talked about, like the work sessions. The only thing, the only concern I have is going in there, which I think that's a really good idea. It's just to help those people that come, the public, understand that it's not a conversation for them. Does that make sense? But, cause some of the meetings we had, you know, when we're doing, you know, all of a sudden these people sitting here and they feel like.
They can comment.
You know what I'm saying? That, I think that would be to have some sort of a statement or something at the beginning that says this is a work session between members of the.
We could certainly do that and as we reconvene in that room, if we do have a book that have joined us, we can let them know, hey, this is a work session. It's meant to be, it's meant to be informal and I like the term, this is where the sausage is made. It's messy, it's, it's informal, we're just talking, trying to understand the issues and, and like, like tonight, we're just trying to explore and wrap our heads around the impact of what a policy decision could be if it were to be adopted in a certain, uh, in a certain way. Uh, but yeah, I think that, that's a good idea. We, we clearly indicate this is not meant to be.
It's not, yeah, it's not a free for all. And the other thing on the consent agenda, I think, I don't think we can say all subdivisions or all conditional, you know what I'm saying? I think like, like our one today with the, um,
The Duke one?
Yeah, I mean, I think that could have easily been there because there was nothing there. But then the other one that had the flag lot, I think that maybe would be more important. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I think it depends on, like the staff report and if there's.
If there's, if there's something that requires, uh, discretion or certain findings that have to be made by the planning commission.
Right, or, or you define it better for us.
Yeah, and, and maybe that's where I, I will have some discretion in creating the agenda. Where if I think an item is, you know, run of the mill, concise, doesn't require a whole lot of, of discussion. You guys review the staff report and if, if there's something that comes up before the meetings, say, hey, I'm curious about this. We can always pull it out and, and publish the agenda twenty four hours in advance. Even if we decide to make that change in the meeting, you can make a motion to pull it out.
Yeah, I've been in lots of meetings where somebody wants to pull one item off the consent agenda, it's very easy, it's very. I really like that.
Since I knew, how often do subdivisions come up? Cause I'm like, I don't think I've seen one.
This year, we've had maybe six. What, what I believe the planning commission is most beneficial is discussions. What, what I believe the planning commission is most beneficial is discussions that we've had tonight on policy creation. That's really where you guys provide the most value and benefit. Subdivision's really, the code is established, it is just exercising the code, it's administrative, we are obligated to approve if it is compliant. So in that regard, it's like, okay, we have a DRC that does a very technical review, many review comments and recent metals until we know that it meets our standards. Um, those I feel like, okay, they, they can be in the consent agenda and the public can be aware because it's on the agenda, um. But there's not, uh, there's no discretion that needs to be discussed, there's not a development agreement that needs a recommendation to counsel, those types of things, keep it in consent. If there's something unique, I'll just know that that needs to be discussed at more length and we'll just agendaize it as a regular item. Uh, but that might save us some time, like this meeting, for example, we're nine o'clock, we probably could have ended a little bit earlier if we didn't discuss in quite as much length on. Maybe this rental, but, um, it'll make us more efficient, it'll allow us to feel like we can discuss at more length some of these other policy related items. Uh, that's up to you, these, you know, this is all, you know. How we want to structure the planning commission, how we wanna spend our time, how do we wanna use our agendas, and this is an idea I've, I've been thinking about for quite some time of. Let's go into formal work session, maybe let's use the consent item, uh, agenda to be maybe a little bit more efficient when our agendas get longer especially.
And there not, might not be a consent agenda on every meeting, I mean, it would just, sometimes the minutes can go in there, I mean, there's things that can go in there. But I think the important thing, and I'm just speaking to myself and other members. Is I think it's really important that we take the time to look at the consent agenda before we come, I think that's only fair to the people that are, anyway, that's.
That we're voting on, yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, a consent agenda, you're not getting any back, you know, sometimes Scott gives you so much background on different things, but that, we're getting no background. We're getting nothing. I just think it's important that we don't.
So I think it depends on what's gonna go in it, what's what you said, what goes in there.
I would not have even brought this up if I didn't think you guys are well read. I've, I've had commissions that haven't read a single thing. This is not with North Logan, this is prior in my career, I've had folks that just, they come, they, they read while they're at the meeting and it's, you know. It, I mean, it is what it is, but a consent agenda does require you to be aware, so you're not approving something without, you know, being aware that it is what it is. Okay, we'll kind of go in that direction. The last thing I wanted to bring up is, this is our, our calendar for this year. We're getting towards the end of the year, we'll probably be putting together a calendar for next year. Um, a thought worth discussing is, um. If you look back on the last couple of years, even while we've been working on the general plan and we've had a lot of, you know, extra meetings. Our actual planning commission meetings, um, there are months where we only have one because of the holiday schedules and how things work out, like January, for example. We have one in the middle of the meeting, May, one in the middle of the meeting because we had, uh, I forget it was, something was earlier. Yeah, so there's, there's months where we have one, m- months where we have two, and a question I guess I had, I don't know if I. Opened the discussion, do we have a standing meeting once a month and we have a potential meeting if and when it's necessitated? Um, or do we have all the regular items, first meeting of the month and all of our work session items, the second meeting of the month? I don't, i- it's a thought, I, there's, there's enough ebb and flow in things that it, it seems as if it's nice to just. Throw something on the agenda if and when it's needed, but there have been, uh, several months where we've, we've canceled one of our meetings. Cause we just don't have anything that we need to consider, um, or it could wait until the next meeting agenda if it's not in time pressing. So I'm sensitive to the amount of time you guys spend, you know, two meetings a month is, you know, outrageous, but, you know. We don't need an extra one, maybe we only have one meeting that is a regular planned notice meeting. And if we need another meeting, we can notice a special meeting for that second meeting on the map there. These are.
I like that idea. I think that's a, I think it's a great idea, whatever you think. I mean, I'm, I'm okay to, I'm okay to get a meeting canceled, but if we just say, yeah, we have a regular meeting and then if we need to add one. How does that go with notifying the public?
He just said he just has, you have to notice a week before.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry.
A lot of communities, they'll indicate, our, our, our regular meeting schedule is every first and third meeting of the month. And then when they cancel a meeting, they'll send out a notice that says this meeting is, this regular meeting is canceled. Um, I like to be able to put together the yearly calendar because it helps me just visualize our year. And when we have availability to put things on the agenda. Um, it also helps us see when certain conferences are inevitably spring break and fall break. We'd have a hard time getting a phone together, um, just because people were traveling. Now, that's, you know, see in April, we, we had one meeting in April because we knew spring break was gonna be, we also had a conference the second week, so we just said, hey, one meeting.
I, I don't mind how it's easier for me actually to remove a meeting and to add one, because I may be booked.
That's true.
It is for me, I, like, no matter what we do, I'm gonna put what's possible in the.
Maybe what we'll do then, um, I'll start to put together the calendar for next year, um. And, uh, and that way we can at least have it, our, our anticipated meeting schedule established. And then we can decide if we wanna hold all of our work sessions for the second meeting in the month. Um, it's not that it hasn't worked well, it's that there are options and it's worth having a conversation about.
Letter it could say the planning commission meets the first Thursday.
Or there may be one. Okay, that's some good feedback. Um, I'll throw together next year's calendar and we'll kind of see how that lines up and we can talk about this again if we finalize it for next year. Okay, I appreciate you chatting through that, there's some administrative items, so. Last thing, uh, EPA Utah Fall Conference is October ninth and tenth, it's in Salt Lake. Um, that's Thursday and Friday, if you guys would like to go, let me know. Um, Aaron and I are gonna carpool down each day, I don't have to stay overnight, so if you guys wanna carpool with us, um, let us know. We do need to get registrations, uh. It's in Salt Lake. October ninth and tenth, Thursday and Friday.
We're still gonna have, um, my new commission. Is it October ninth?
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe the second.
Well, I'd schedule on that.
Yeah, we, we moved, so October is indeed because we moved, this is the October first and.
I already, I already know I'm missing that.
I know, I won't be here on the night content, no.
We have a wedding thing, so.
We have a, so all of a sudden, two of us for sure aren't gonna be here on the night, plus you guys, cause you're gonna be at a meeting, right?
So let's, let's plan to cancel that, I'll make sure the notice goes out. If you guys would like to come, instead of planning condition, let me know, we'll get you registered, um, if you wanna carpool, you're totally welcome to hop in. We do have training budget, so if you guys would like to do that this time.
Can you let us know how, if we need more hours or whatever, you know, I'm saying.
I'll, uh, I'll update you guys' training hour trackers and let you know where you stand for the year.
Three hundred hours.
You're, you're actually probably close because you had your, you recently had your first hour in your, um. Open and public meetings training just a couple of months ago. I think everybody else has stuff, something that you put on your tracker this year, but I'll go double check and see.
I think I had a whole bunch of that one.
I did a course thing too and got my little certificate.
I gotta do my open meetings, you have to do that every year, so.
I did that, anyway. Well, I thought I did at the beginning of the year, but I don't remember. But I did do something and I got a certificate.
I'll, I'll double check, I'll send out the tracker so you guys know where you're at and we can see where, where we need to fill in for this year. Okay, that's all I have, uh, next meeting is on the eighteenth.
Okay, anybody else have anything you wanna talk about? The ninth of October is not a meeting. But our next meeting is the eighteenth of September, okay? All right, that's adjourned. We're adjourned, we don't have to have a motion.